Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Today, Tuesday, April 23rd. It's 8:30 a.m., and if we'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we get started this morning, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Any changes or additions to the agenda?
I didn't look for updates this morning, but I'll just mention it. When we get to the donations for the bridge, Poplar Bridge, that there was one more that wasn't listed there yesterday, the $5,000 from Cook County.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure that that's provided.
It's not a change to the agenda, really.
Great. Any other changes or additions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support to approve our agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this time, we have our public comment period, an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. I see that we have one person all set and ready to visit with us, so I'll welcome Carolyn Dry. And thank you for signing in and being so prompt.
Thank you for having the public comment period here. I feel that I need to, in all honesty, come and talk to you about what was done yesterday in your name, which I suspect that some of the board were not familiar or appraised of, but I think that I should make it publicly known because it was a meeting with James Yorkey and Ann Sullivan.
So that's James Yorkey.
Okay.
Yorkey.
Anyhow, it was done in your name, and I think you should know what happened at the meeting. I thought the meeting was going to be about, again, I was not well-informed, I guess, I thought the meeting was going to be about how to improve the orchard and things that could be done, and it was going to be with James and with Sarah Waddle. And I invited Diane Booth along, and I had an agenda. And the agenda was all the things that could be done to improve the orchard. When we got there, Diane was introduced, and Ann Sullivan was there instead of Sarah Waddle, and Diane was asked to leave the meeting and told that this meeting was not about what we thought it was about, it was about something else. It was very rudely taken by her. She was not happy. I talked with her later. And so anyhow, after she was asked to leave the meeting, there I was. And James said that this is, you must understand, this is county land, that the orchard is on, and then Ann Sullivan did most of the talking. This is the orchard, I'm talking now, this is the orchard that Diane and I bought, all the trees that are there, all the fruits, and she got the fence, we both got grants, and yes, it's on county land, but we had permission. Then Ann Sullivan said that it is a county asset. And it is now a county asset. Okay. So, and then in discussion about what will happen, she mentioned that Sarah Waddle will probably lead it or manage it, and there will be two University of Minnesota affiliated groups, the Master Gardeners and the Master Naturalists involved, and four schools. And I asked how this would work, and there were no answers, just we'll leave it up to the educators. I'm assuming the educators will also be from the University of Minnesota. I'm not sure. So, since the people that have been managing the orchard and put the orchard in and have been managing it for years, we don't belong to any of those organizations, I'm assuming that this is a takeover by a different group, which is heavily related to the University of Minnesota. Sarah Waddle, who has been to the orchard a total of two times to my knowledge, once with us to show the University of Minnesota what all the trees were, because, you know, she hadn't been there. And anyhow, she was hired half-time at the University of Minnesota, which I understand was James' decision. I don't know if the board was involved or not in that decision. And she also said in one of her speeches lately that her job is now to be the education coordinator in which she relays any questions back to the University of Minnesota. That is her job. So her job is to relate to the University of Minnesota. So, yeah, and it has not been an easy interaction with me, with Sarah anyhow, asking questions about the health of the orchard, is the orchard healthy? And, you know, that orchard is a showpiece. So, I suggest that it is no longer a community orchard run by people that live here, but it is really a county asset with affiliations to the University of Minnesota and elsewhere. This was a bottom-up activity, which is now, has a top-down sort of pressure on it, let's say. And I find this very disappointing. You, as a board, are supposed to be open, not have these closed meetings that you don't even know about, I can tell by the looks on your faces. You're supposed to endanger trust. This breaks my trust yet again, as you did in that last meeting where you didn't even have any publicity at all about the community orchard being taken over by the Justice Center. And you're supposed to foster community involvement. So anyhow, there is also some legal issues that I'm researching, because trees that have fruits are not like other kind of organisms, and you can't just, you have to understand if they're patented or not, and I'm doing research on this. And so I will get back to you with that. But there's a question about what happens to these trees if some of them are not actually able to remain an orchard.
Just a reminder, Carolyn, of our time. We have two minutes.
Okay. So anyhow, I find this very disappointing. I mean, I moved to Grand Marais for a lot of reasons, and part of it was North House, and part of it was the open attitude of people sort of grabbing on to this orchard, excuse me, and having community involvement, putting it in and all, and the activities of Diane Booth, who you all know is like a treasure in terms of her knowledge, and she's not to be involved in this either, I understand, but at least that was her takeaway, that she's not wanted. So it's very unfortunate. And, you know, I manage the Apple Festival, I manage the seedling giveaway, I do lots of things with trees, and it's all a joy, except for this. This has gotten to be quite a slug, and I don't like, I don't like it, frankly. It's very disappointing to me. You know, we should be an open, accepting community in which things are allowed to develop from the community, and they don't need to have written documentation, even though they have a handshake and an agreement that things can happen, like happened with this. We got an agreement from Pat Lysen, and, you know, for eight years, nobody complained. All of a sudden...
Carolyn, 30 seconds.
So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your remarks. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning?
Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
I have allergies. I have a cough. It's not related to anything else. It's what it is.
Thank you.
On today's agenda, you have an item that's called Organizational Strategic Plan, and it's being presented to you for your approval. The plan assures you that with approval, you're not going to commit to any kind of expenditures. Kind of sounds like the Justice Center, a plan with no money. Let's take a look at this plan and some of the suggested purchases that are included in it. One is a, one, five, there are five clear references to hiring new staff. There's three references to software platforms. There's numerous references to experts, consultants, outsourcing, vendors. Interesting how you can use different terms for the very same thing. It's all money going out. And our favorite, of course, is fund balance, levy, and bonding. Goal number one in that plan is to implement a capital improvement plan. I hope you've taken a look at that to see what that capital improvement plan is, but that means if you approve this plan, you're approving the Justice Center. Really? Again, you're being asked to approve the Justice Center, but not in a real straightforward way. It's kind of coming at your back door, and it's called an organizational strategic plan. Sounds to me like there's a lot of building plan included in this, that maybe this plan is overstepping what its term is, called organizational. Deferred maintenance is a part of that, and I'm going to quote some of the things that I've seen in the Budget and Facilities meetings and other agenda items. It says CRBPS is a planning tool to identify things we should be thinking about. I thought CRBPS was charged with something more than just a planning tool, in that they were asked to take a look at the buildings and determine for you some needs, some priorities, some way to keep all of your assets in good shape. And you've been informed more than once about a couple of these pieces. In fact, many, many times, too many to even think about. And yet you've taken those steps to deal with some of those things. I'm going to use the word hypnotized, but I think the Justice Center is just exactly that. It's got you hypnotized into believing that this is what we need. You've been inundated with the same information now for, what, two, three years? And at some point, it kind of gets to be old hat. It's like, people assume, well, it's the Justice Center. Well, of course, it's the Justice Center. This is exactly what we wanted, really. I have yet to see some real statistics that say, this is what we need. We have 11 staff in this courthouse that you're going to move into, how many thousand square feet? You talk about a grand jury. Well, the last one was in 2008, and we're going to build special for a grand jury. An interesting twist to this, one small piece in deferred maintenance, is again the use of Colville. In the Budget and Facilities meeting in February 27th, here's a statement that was in there. If users are satisfied with the current condition, then we, commissioners, can address when we, commissioners, get to the point of making those decisions. What are you talking about? No users are satisfied, particularly with Colville. There are safety issues, there's leaks, there's rot. That's acceptable? This is your building, and you're putting the responsibility back on Colville to tell you what needs to happen in that building. This is your building. This is what CRBPS, I thought, was originally hired for, is to tell you, well, they need a roof. They need this. They don't need floors, they don't need this, they don't need that. And you've given simply a laundry list of what is in each building with no priority to how you're going to take care of those things. You're working with CRBPS to get more details. We've been asking for details for at least two years. I wonder if CRBPS was really given the understanding about what you wanted, so that they would come back with a tool that you could actually use. They simply did an inventory, and they didn't share the plan. I mean, look at how long we've been asking for the detail, and we didn't get it. And now there is a timetable in your organizational plan on page 133 that says we are going to complete the deferred maintenance. We're going to implement all 23, 24 deferred maintenance by December 31st of 2024. People, we're into the end of April. There's been nothing done to move forward. You think you're going to find a contractor tomorrow to do something yet in this year? And yet you're talking about implement all? You don't even know what "all" is yet. You're still asking for information from your community. And just in case you missed it, if you vote yes for this, you again are being told, the public is being told, that you support the Justice Center. It's a part of the plan. It's goal number one.
Thank you very much, Jarvis. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Any other members of the public? Are there any commissioners that have received items to read? All right. We will close our public comment period at this time and move on to our consent agenda. We have our claims, minutes, approval of retirement for Joe Ruth, permit application for the raffle, donation, and the gambling permit request. Is there any item a commissioner wishes to pull?
Oh, here. Available. We're having computer issues. I'm helping.
Chairman. I don't want to pull anything. I just want to thank Joseph for his work here and working with him and the VRBOs and all of the ups and downs that we had, and him coming forward with details and so forth. So I appreciate that. Plus, the other things that he's done over the last 15 years. Joseph, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the board does too, but I want to call you out to say thanks.
Absolutely. All right. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or, excuse me.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We have with us this morning Robbie Haas from the Highway Department, our Highway Engineer, and thank you for joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a couple of contracts on here we are going to discuss. The first one, calcium chloride, it's the stuff we put down every summer, helps the dust on the road, helps the integrity of the road. I'm going to give a little bit of backstory on this one, just because there's going to be kind of a big difference this year with it. So you can see, we recommend awarding the contract to the little bidder for $229,785. What's been happening over the last few years is that cost has gone up and up and up and up and up, and it's something we can't keep up with. And so this is actually about $30,000 over what we had budgeted. We had proposed reducing our budget of calcium chloride from, I want to say, close to $300,000 last year, down to $200,000. And that came out of kind of this last year's, you know, 2024 budgeting stuff, and just, you know, something has to give, right? And so with this, we're proposing, you know, reducing it down to $200,000, meaning that's just less product on the road. And so what we're working on now is, this is a little cart and the horse thing, because we were starting to work on it, but we had to get bids out. So our final policy has not been set yet, but how we're going to determine which roads is really just based on traffic counts on the roads and then kind of the road geometry itself. Is it a long, straight road? We know people are going fast on. Is it a steep road with hills? And a variety of other factors. So more to come on the very specifics of which roads are going to get treated, but I just want it known that it will be less this year and probably going forward. The last, I'd say even four years, the cost has gone up about 50 cents per gallon, as opposed to the previous, since 2009, it hovered around 80 cents or a dollar. So the last few years have seen a dramatic increase, and we just can't keep up with it, so. Is there any questions about calcium chloride?
Question I had is, the cause of the increase, is it primarily transportation up here?
It could be that. I'm not sure, though, because you look at the cost from, you know, like I was saying, from 2009 through 2021, and it went from, you know, maybe 80 cents to a dollar, and it's been hovering around a dollar for a long time, and then just in these last three years, you know, three or four years, it's gone from a dollar to, I think this year was a $1.53. And so you can imagine, over hundreds of thousands of gallons, tens of thousands of gallons, that adds up pretty darn quick. So, yeah, I'm not sure. I don't know if it's supply, I don't know if it's, who knows, COVID things. I don't know how long we can blame that. We'll see.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you for that update. What is the average time in the summer that you start the applications?
So realistically, we don't even get it till July.
Oh.
Right. And we've tried to push earlier and earlier, and it just, it can't happen. It doesn't happen. And so that's the other reason, when we look at our budget and the question gets asked of where we can cut costs, to me, this is an area that it is. We use it as dust control. Yes, it benefits the road a little bit, not going to deny that, but in the grander scheme, we're not using it to its full effectiveness. We don't have enough material on our roads. That's a retirement goal of mine. We'll see if that happens. But, yeah, realistically, you should grind it in, or not grind it in, but reclaim it in, mix it in, you know? And that really helps the base and really helps it, you know, perform better. We spray the top, that's all we can do, and so it's more of a dust control. And then, like we were saying, July, so you're talking a handful, handful of months, or not even a handful, a few months of effectiveness, so.
Do we even have, do we, when you say grind it in, do you mean like a, like a plow, like a rake or a disc, or do we have that equipment?
So we don't do that.
I understand that, but is it because, one, would be the time, but two, do we have the equipment if we thought...
Oh, we have the equipment, we don't have the material. So a lot of, a lot of the roads, you know, you can see it, I mean, it's all over, and it's not a slight on anything, it's just, it's, we have a big system, a small staff, limited resources, we, you know, we can only do what we can. In an ideal world, yeah, there'd be six inches of beautiful, you know, surfacing on all of our roads, and then that's what you would kind of grind this stuff in, or, you know, mix it into. But we use it topically, dust control. So.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is it really possible with the winters we have and how we have to plow before the roads are sometimes totally frozen, and then we have to plow in the spring when they're starting to thaw, and so there goes the road everywhere, in the snowbanks? Is it really possible for us to get that much topping to, like, be on our roads?
Yes, but I would need a lot more money. Short answer. It is, yes. But it is an interesting one, where, yeah, we have gravel roads, material, even if you, you know, "plow lightly," quote unquote, you're going to end up with material in the ditch. It's inevitable. And so it is this kind of put money on the road, dig the money out of the ditch, put that money in a pit somewhere, and then off, you know, so you're kind of in this cycle. But then the flip side is, we could have a long discussion about paving. You know, that's, right, right, and I know where we are, and I know what that means, but I also know the cost with that, and a lot of our roads aren't in a condition to just go pave. There's a lot of work. You look at the money we sunk into, you know, County Road 45, for example, and the effort it took to get that to a point where not even all of it right now, but we could go in there. I mean, it'd be scraping, a little bit of good material on top still, then you could pave it. But we're all familiar with the frost boils that come out and what that means, and so we just can't go in and go pave the North Road, for example. It'd look nice for a couple of years and then disintegrate, you know, so.
One year.
One year, true. I'm optimistic.
Any other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Actually, I have two. First one, how many miles of roadway do you expect this contract to cover?
Not sure off the top of my head. We started, like I said, we're kind of in the middle of that right now, and we're still trying to assess. We have some preliminary ideas of which roads will stay and which roads get cut. We're trying to also determine, you know, is it just a yea or nay on the road, or if it meets some type of threshold, is it, well, we'll do it in front of people's houses? You know, some, two policies we've been looking at a lot is Lake Counties and St. Louis Counties. They have a similar thing. If you're below a certain ADT, I think it's like 50 cars per day, it's no treatment. You know, if you're between 50 and 100, maybe it's in front of houses, and if it's over 100, we'll do the whole road. You know, do we want to set it at 100, 200? Not sure yet, so we're still trying to work on that. I have, you know, a little bit of time to figure that one out still. But this kind of gets to the things we talked about in Highway Committee, of these various little policies that we're working to try and implement, and just so, you know, when people have questions, we can say, here we go, this is what we worked through in committees and board meetings, and to talk about how best to do this, so.
And so, talking about that policy and our snow removal policy, and how that may relate to protecting our roads if we do not totally clear all our gravel roads...
Right.
...the way we sometimes have been doing.
Right. Yeah, and that's something we've talked about a lot. I know our Maintenance Superintendent Matt Nessheim's been doing very good, and the crew's been very receptive and, you know, understanding, you know, sometimes we just got to change a little bit how we do stuff. And so especially with gravel roads, trying to leave, you know, a little snowpack on top to protect them. Sometimes that can create slippery conditions, though, so you're in this, you know, give and take of that. I'm not saying we're going to figure out the perfect answer to this, but I think, you know, working, you know, especially getting back to the chloride application and kind of the agenda item we have here, is saying, yes, our low bid was over budget. In our contract, we can reduce that amount by up to like 30%, I believe, so we can move that number up. If we're, say, under budget, great, let's do more. Or in this case, we're over, so we're just going to do less and stick within our budget.
I just wanted to make sure the public understands, there's a trade-off, you know, snow-packed roads in the spring and the fall may be a little, little bit, go slower, you know?
Right.
It saves our roads, it's cost-effective for the county. Don't complain about your budget going up if you don't want to take care of our roads.
Right. Drive the road. Yes.
And so, again, you'll have an opportunity to firsthand tell people this, because this is all communications and education. This is what, what this is. And if people understand that, I mean, you want to go 65, go to the highway. If you want to go 55, you actually can't, even though I was told that is the speed limit. And the North Road, there's no place on there, you can go 55. I tried. Can't.
Don't try.
There's not a long enough stretch. So, yeah.
All right. Well, good conversation, good questions. Any other questions or comments for Engineer Haas? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, ma'am, Chairman. Thank you, Robbie. And, yeah, I get it, we got to, we got to find the balance there, and I trust you, the department, and the Highway Advisory Committee to kind of figure that out and just walk that line. Six years ago, we reduced the calcium chloride application and got a lot of pushback.
Well, we eliminated it.
Thank you.
A little different, yeah. No, I hear you. Yes, absolutely.
And, yeah, and so we got a lot of pushback.
Right.
And it's, it doesn't have to be an either-or, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try to figure out what's most appropriate where and how we can best manage that, so. Not an easy line to walk. I also get feedback from the public not wanting to use any because of the environmental impacts.
Right.
But a lot of, a lot of public input as well regarding the health impacts of dust on people, so.
Right.
So, yeah, hard to please everybody, but I really appreciate the work you're doing to try to cover all our bases here.
I appreciate it. There's some interesting comparisons when you look at, we're small, right? We know our population is small, sixth smallest in the state, I believe. And so I look at a lot of times what my counterparts and maybe the 10 smallest counties are doing. And we spend orders of magnitude more than everybody else on calcium chloride. So it's just something to keep in mind that it's, we do do this way more than other comparable counties do.
Is, is that because we have more gravel roads?
No.
Okay.
Because they're all rural, you know? Red Lake, Koochahjing, you know? I don't think that's any different. You could probably pull hairs, you know, a couple of miles here and there, but overall.
Well, thank you for that information. Is there a motion to recommend the award of the contract?
I'll make a motion to award, to recommend the award of the contract for the calcium chloride for this season.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next one, this is kind of an opposite story. We had something coming under budget. Yay. So this is awarding, yeah, our aggregate stockpile, gravel crushing, in short, and I guess we're recommending awarding to TNT Construction here for just on over $136,000. Our budget was $150,000, so we might just crush a little more. We'll see.
All right.
And this will, sorry, one more thing. This will be in our Maple Hill and Airport Pit, so kind of centrally located this time. Last year, we were in the west and the east end, so we kind of rotate every so often.
Any questions for Robbie?
Have we worked with TNT before?
Yep. It's almost every year, them and Lucstick will almost rotate back and forth. But anyways, they're both pretty familiar with being up here. TNT has been up here. I think they were up here two years ago, if I remember right.
The name didn't stick then.
TNT.
Straightforward.
So think of other things.
Well, yeah. Are they, are they a subsidiary of Acme Co? No, okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for TNT Construction for $136,125 for our aggregate stockpile.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And can I do one quick thing? So we had a nasty little windstorm recently, we're all familiar with. And for people that drive by our department, you can see our, our cool salt sand shed is missing a spot, so we had a seam burst on it, which is unfortunate. And so half of it isn't covered right now, but we're working with Clearspan and our, it is under warranty and insurance to get that fixed. So hopefully this, you know, in the next month or so, I'm hoping that can just go back to how it was and everything's fine. So I just wanted to give a little update there. We're working on it. I'm aware that there's a piece missing.
I drove by and I thought, something looks different.
We folded it back so it can air out. Anyways, thank you all.
Thanks for that update.
Madam Chair, Robbie, before you go, what of the material in the, in the shed? Is it salvageable or?
Oh, yeah. So the, the sand itself, it'd be fine. We'll probably move it around a little bit and just so it can dry out. The salt unfortunately, to be determined. You know, you know how salt is, once it gets wet, turns into a clump. So if we can break it up, we will, but if not, I mean, again, hopefully warranty, insurance, we can figure that out. So, yeah, big salt licks. If you see a lot of deer over there. Sorry. But yeah, definitely it was, I think we had got our next year's salt allocation like two days before this happened. It's definitely a bummer, but yeah, more to come. Anyways.
All right. Thanks. All right. Tim Nelson is here for Land Services to talk about a grant. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Administrator Yorki and Hall. Yes, I bring for you today an opportunity actually, and I would have liked to have brought this earlier. We actually weren't aware of the RFP that had come out a lot earlier until about three weeks before the deadline of the application. And then reading it through, we thought we had a very slim chance of even getting this. So the cycle of that didn't really allow for us to, to bring it in front of you first. Plus, we knew that, well, first we anticipated not getting it. There's only a total of 600,000 over the entire state and so only six projects were being approved for this. And so we, we just didn't, didn't get it in and we knew that this, it actually isn't the final approval of this. This is just a tentative approval. I'll be, if it does, if you guys do approve this, the acceptance of this grant, I'll be bringing the final agreement at the next meeting, first meeting in May. So what this is, is yeah, yeah, it's a great opportunity. It's for addressing and targeting private well water and, and safe drinking water and it kind of prioritizes permanent residents that live here and then kind of sub-prioritizes elderly, those over 65 and the young families with children and it's income-based as well. And it's basically three phases. And the glorious thing about this, I might interject, is that there's no match requirement whatsoever. So it's just, it's a hundred thousand, the, the application we submitted is slightly under 100, but it's 100 with no match whatsoever. And that fund, those funds can also be used for staff time and mileage and everything. So this is absolutely at no cost or impact to the county. And we were working collaboratively with the Public Health and Human Services and SWCD as well to get this in. And this project will go from this summer, July of this year, all the way up through the end of April, first part of May of 2027. So it's, it's not a lot of money to be spread out over such a long period of time, but it's broken down into the three categories. Basically, a whole educational, promotional kind of timeline here to, to just make sure there's a good public awareness of it. Then there'll be a testing phase of well water, specific testing for the private wells, again, targeting those particular groups and, and permanent residents of the county. And then enter into a remediation phase where we would assist folks in information and such and remediation and then some of those funds and obviously slightly less than 100 grant isn't going to go a long ways, but there would be some designated towards helping those low income and those targeted groups as well go through the remediation part of it. So it is just a project, it's a snapshot and again, there's no cost to the county. Looking for just acceptance for this on a tentative basis and then I, I had already received the draft final agreement, so we're in review of this. I'll have it up in front of the county attorney to go ahead and review and bring this back in the first meeting in May for final approval.
Questions for Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I heard like down in rural Minnesota, central, that there were water testing going on because of the farming and the use of fertilizer. Is, is this is kind of the same thing? Is that what this was for?
Well.
No?
No, there, there are some of the projects that are in that particular area. In, in our area, obviously, we don't have, we're not an ag county, but there are a lot of components that are naturally in kind of some of the water aquifers and systems that also do need to be tested for, plus also like with, associated with failing septic systems or other types of, of bad land use practices that might have contaminated some well waters. And some of the remediation can be done just simply by, you know, chlorinating the wells and, and getting those treated and, and others might need more work. So, yeah, there, there are some of those cases, but not so much here.
Well, and that's what, I was confused when I read about it, some, I'm thinking, well, why are we doing it? So, yeah, I did have another question. Oh, the income qualifications, does the state set that or do we set that or how, how's that work?
Yeah, we'll be discussing that and I believe it's a combination with the state. The state does have guidelines. We already do have, as with our septic loan program, we have different sets of funds set aside. One of those with the ag BMP loans, there is the, the grant that's set aside for some of those is a low, is low income and that is established by the state. So we would be using that and we can come before the board and give you an update on, on what those levels would be. Part of the, the whole education portion of it is to then, and we'll probably put out some surveys like the, the Survey Monkey, like we did for the vacation rental stuff, be able to determine what kind of demand and what kind of need will be out there. And then we can maybe adjust based off of exactly what the need would be and maybe be able to adjust how many we do test and then how many we're able to get in remediation.
So when I was reading through the proposal and it said 270 tests, is that your target of doing 270 households or?
Yeah, you pick a number, you know, and that's, that's.
Just, I wondered how you chose that number based on if it, because you do do water tests through your office department right now.
Sure, we have different types of water testing. We have simple fluoride testing and then we also have water testing for the fecal coliform and such and there, there are different tests. We do the, the fluoride testing right here in the office ourselves and, and the others test go on down to a lab. So, yeah, it's just a target and we do, we, like I said, we had worked collaboratively with Public Health and Human Services to kind of get that feel of the numbers and so it's, it's one of those we are going to kind of adjust. We anticipate adjusting as we go and, and get the numbers in of the interest and the demand and then the numbers of those tested. And then we have to look at the remediation with the number of those that are tested and have found to be contaminated and what the cost for remediation would be. So at each of the phases, we kind of anticipate having to adjust that somewhat.
Yeah. So another thing that was in the contract was that you have to report to the MDH every six months.
Yes.
I would like to, you know, not let this fall by the, forget about it, because I have a tendency to do that sometimes about things we talked about a year ago. So I just, when that first one comes through or the first few, if it could just be added to as far as information for our board packet, I don't think you need to come and explain it to us, but I just think it'd be curious and it's also a way to keep it in the public's eye of, hey, county is offering this to you if you want it, if you qualify, whatever. So.
Absolutely.
I would like to see that.
Even part of the way through, we can come and do a, after we've done a bunch of testing, we get a feel of really what's out there, we can spend a segment in one of the Cow meetings and be able to kind of do a little more of a presentation in that sense as well. But yes, I will, I will commit to go on ahead and anything we report up to the Minnesota Department of Health, you'll receive information for as well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So any other questions? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Thanks for this. I think it's really great for our rural area, even though we aren't agriculture. When you have a massive snowmelt or you have a huge thunderstorm, water can seep into the wells and become contaminated from what's falling from the sky because of things that go into the sky. I usually have my well tested every few years, even though it was very low when I read that I had arsenic, it was like, oh my goodness, but it was very low, so I didn't panic. But when you see that word, you know, you wonder, oh boy. So it would be great if, if somehow folks who live in the rural area could have well testing or at access to it, even though they may not be able to get one of these grants. But I think it's time that we understand our water system in our backyards.
Commissioner White. Commissioner White.
Director Tim. Could you explain briefly, it's not that hard to get your water tested, the homeowner, could you walk us through how the homeowner, you pick up the, could you walk us through how to do that?
Yeah, so basically, Madam Chair, Commissioner White, the, the, the testing is going to be for the property owners to go ahead and do because a lot of that, especially if you're looking at the lead and that's part of it too with lead interior piping, that settles in or seeps into the water overnight. So it's got to be the first draw in the morning when you're running the water. And so the property owner's going to get, get the test from us and then they're going to go ahead and conduct the test. Then it has to go, it, it's, it's a timing thing as well because there is a transport to the lab and it has to be to the lab within 24 hours of the time that the test was taken. Otherwise, some of those chemicals and materials will leach out or start disappearing or whatever. And so they do need to be brought to locations where we'll have designated for people to be able to drop those off and then that, those will be sent to the well. But basically, it is just running the water and there'll be lists of instructions in for how exactly to take those tests. But yeah, there are five compounds that they're looking for. Yeah, and arsenic is one of those that's a natural occurring contaminant here and in low doses, very low doses, it's kind of acceptable, but yeah. And fluoride, it's, I was, when I first moved here, and the house that we rented and when we first moved in, had four times over the, the limit in fluoride. And you think, oh, fluoride's a good thing. Well, not four times over the limits, it's not. And it actually damaged kids' teeth and stuff like that. So you have to put in like a reverse osmosis system or some of that stuff. So it's really important, even in the natural compounds that are there in the water themselves prior to contamination, it's, it's important to pick those up, so.
So what are the compounds we're looking for that are tested for? Arsenic, fluoride?
Potassium is one, I think.
That's okay if you don't know.
Yeah, right off the top, man. I'm getting old and feeble of mind, I can't just.
Nitrate, arsenic, bacteria, lead, mag?
Manganese, that's the one.
That's odd, I didn't know what, I didn't look that up.
I said potassium, but it's manganese. Yeah.
Trace, trace element. Who does the testing, where is this water taken to, what physical location?
Okay, so that's part of the work, so we can't do work to the grant until we actually get it approved and get all the funding and stuff like that. Once we start, then there, there are labs in basically Duluth or in the range that, you know, we have to put out RFPs and get, make sure that we get, you know, the, the, the proper documentation, the, the land services will be the fiscal agent for this and we, we will be determined. But we use, we use labs that are in the area and sometimes we've switched labs depending on what the types of testing we do. And so we'll have to arrange for that and get that in place by the time that we start or when we're approved to start and get everything set. The first component is going to be the public educational one, so we do have time to get all of that arranged because the lab itself will have to prepare the test kits to give to us so that we can give them to the, the landowners.
So not in regards to the grant, but if I, if I want to test my well water, what do I do? I get the water in a container, do I come and hand it off to you or do I drive down 60, 60, 61, taking it someplace and asking them to test it?
Yeah, and, and then again, Commissioner White, it's been adjusted over time. There, there are times when if somebody doesn't feel capable of being able to test that water and we have somebody, a staff member out in that area doing field inspections anyway, we'll have that person stop and help assist with the well water testing, we'll take it. But, and we've utilized both our office, we've utilized Arrowhead Electric as drop-off points for couriers to take those to labs and that's been adjusted in the, in the time that I've been here. Like I said, with fluoride, we do those in-house.
Who are the couriers?
And that.
From the water testing or from the county or from?
No, the couriers would be like Speedy Delivery or whoever we can, can get to be able to take those down. And I, I think Speedy is currently the one doing it. But yeah, that has, that has adjusted over the course of time.
Thanks.
So is there a motion to accept the grant from MDH for $100,000?
I'll still move to accept that.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner White. Support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tim.
I was just looking through the criteria and it almost seems like a no-brainer that, that we got it. Even though you were skeptical, it's like, staff, who is going to do it? What partners have we used, will we use? And it's just a really solid group, so it makes it really, in my mind, it made sense. Maybe the need isn't necessarily as great, but we are a very low population in rural, so I think maybe the burden is greater here too in the distance from places. And I was really curious about the trade secrets. There's a bunch of trade secret lingo in there and I thought that was interesting. You maybe don't know anything about that, or maybe you can't talk about it, actually. But that was, it was just like, is this normal for these types of contracts? And I don't know, maybe you don't know, but it was just, it was really interesting there. You know anything about that?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mills, they, they're putting more and more, you know, as time progresses, they put more and more of these nuanced language into the, into the grants and the grant agreements and such like that. And yeah, there's the whole intellectual property and there's the, you know, disposition of equipment afterwards. And then there's the conflict of interest. We had to sign, you know, particular statements of, you know, ensuring no conflict of interest and all that. So that's just kind of standard language and some of that stuff, my eyes glaze over just a little bit and that's, that's what the county attorney is for.
When I say secret, my eyes open up.
Yeah, I can honestly say we bear no secrets in the land service.
I figured, I figured. And then I was curious just about the remediation. So you mentioned RRL, kind of alluded to maybe repairing septics? If that's the source of the contamination or?
That is a potential and that we have different funding for. You know, so we wouldn't necessarily have to because a hundred grand, if you're talking septic system, isn't going to go far at all. So we have a different pot of funds for that, low-interest loans and such like that. But yeah, there's, there's the reverse osmosis, there's ultraviolet lights, there's even just the bleach. I mean, basic, it really depends on the, on the source and type of contamination.
Recasing maybe or casing liners or?
Yeah, and the, the type of funding, again, since we're only talking, you know, a hundred thousand or less over the course of this time, we're not going to be able to do a whole lot. And it's kind of our hopes when we plug this in, if we were going to, and you know, we like to feel, yeah, we're kind of a shoo-in and, and it should be good, but out of six in the entire state, that felt pretty good to be able to get that awarded. We're kind of hoping that maybe in determining and getting this sampling out there that it might turn into a little bit more of a longer-term program through the Minnesota Department of Health instead of just a singular project.
No, that's a great idea if we can really show the need through some of this. Yeah, my limited experience with well testing is in a three-year department. It was awesome, super helpful, very straightforward. Went in there, staff said, do you want to do it or do you want us to do it? And had to think and talk about that. I ended up doing it and there was very clear instructions. Was given a container for it and followed the instructions, filled the container and then had to deal with the transport again too. And timing's important for that, as you stated, and timing of the day is important with that too. And so in this particular case, the timing didn't work out for the courier. So I actually was the courier and went to Ace Labs in Virginia and handed it over and did the whole thing. But it was a great experience, learning experience and kind of seeing how this all worked. So, yeah, it sounds like a wonderful thing and if we can just, I mean, I think it was a hundred bucks or I can't remember what the test is. But that, this would cover a lot of people testing, but maybe not as much remediation, so. But every bit helps. Thank you for going for it despite the skepticism and it was a great boon for us. Thank you.
He did not ask permission.
Didn't.
I like that.
Just went rogue. Maverick.
Right. We have had some good discussion. We have a motion and a second. Any further remarks or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for doing this for our community.
Thank you.
All right. Item six, I'm going to kind of lead us off since Attorney Hickon can't be with us today. But we've been looking at our bylaws and had a number of additions and changes, opportunities to talk about this at our committee of the whole. And so we have the proposed changes that are before you. For me, it's, I can see the changes in red, see what's, what's been removed, what's been added. I like looking at the back end of the document where it's how it will read in the end. But everybody's a little bit different. So are there any questions that people have about the document that Attorney Hickon has provided us? Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I was prepared to discuss some of these issues that are committee of the whole and that we, it got pushed back.
Right.
So, and that just feels to me like there should be discussion about some of these items. And is, are we going to do that here or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This is our opportunity.
First of all, was archiving meetings and I didn't know, it says in there, we're going to archive the YouTube meetings.
Can you tell us where?
Test page.
I just made my notes that I sent on to Attorney Hickon after the committee of the whole.
I have a connection, I've lost mine.
I do. So looking in the packet.
Official records, yep.
So are you looking at the video conferencing?
Well, and that's why I just thought when we were going to discuss this with committee of the whole, having Attorney Hickon there to help lead us through why she put these changes in and would have been a good way to discuss this document.
Well, and we can certainly do that. We don't have to approve this today. If people feel more comfortable with, you know, discussing this at the committee of the whole, we can do that. I would.
Well, I would like to have the attorney here if we have questions either here or at the committee of the whole. For any questions that might show up.
Okay.
That we don't know until we start to have a conversation about something.
All right. So Commissioner Mills?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. For the, for the public's benefit and for the board's benefit at large, I think it'd be productive and helpful if we started to talk about them now without legal counsel. And then they'll be recorded, legal counsel can look at our discussions in more depth if necessary. And at least we'll all be on the similar page about what some of the concerns are. I think that'd be really helpful.
Sure.
And so I've, I've downloaded the bylaws and we can search by Word. So I searched for archive and there's a number of those. But if there's, you know, more specific search term I can put in here, I can certainly find that.
Well, it was, so what page are you on, Commissioner Mills?
Well, I'm all over the place, but the first instance of archive is on page one, I believe. But I'm assuming based on what you said, you want to go to the second part where it's the finished
Right.
document.
Page twelve is recording and broadcasting.
Yeah.
This is not really exciting video for those of you that need to go get the copy of this.
So yeah, page twelve, recording and broadcasting, all regularly scheduled public meetings of the county board held in Cook County Commissioner's Room at the courthouse are video-recorded, livestreamed and archived on the county YouTube channel. By majority vote of the board, other public meetings may be video-recorded, livestreamed and archived. Board gatherings not governed by open meeting law are not recorded or livestreamed. Is that?
That's what I was referring to and it specifically says archiving. We had the discussion at the committee of the whole about should we, should we not? Here it says we are. And I'm just wondering, do we put it into our bylaws if we haven't had the discussion of yes, that's a good idea or no, that's not a good idea and cost?
It already is in the bylaws, right?
Yep.
And so we should be looking over these regularly, annually, say? Maybe that's a little ambitious depending on what's going on. And so right now, I don't think that's a significant thing and it certainly is something we need to talk more about, but it's not mutually exclusive. We can do this and do that.
But what we did talk about was how long do we archive?
Right, and Commissioner Johnson says, oh, by the by.
I checked out something from two thousand seventeen or was it two thousand seven, whatever it was. So how far back do we go and what is the means of keeping them fifty years from now?
I see that as a separate policy. These are our bylaws. But if we're archiving, we're archiving for the entire county. It's not just board meetings. It's other meetings as well. And so I think that's a discussion with our MIS department about what are the capabilities, what are the costs? That's kind of my take on that.
Yeah, the bylaws do not address how long. It's just that we do archive. And that's kind of the idea is that we want things to be on record and legally we must archive. It's just that we want it in our bylaws that we do archive, that previous boards have not always done that. But it's been twenty, I don't know, when it started, twenty seventeen is maybe, twenty sixteen, I think I've seen, but, you know.
And what's, what's interesting, I asked a number of commissioners at AMC about this and it's all over the map. There is no consistency, there's no standard across the state of Minnesota. It's pretty much what each county decides and a lot of it is based on budget and capability. But I would recommend we look at a separate policy related to that, that not as part of the bylaws, but that we keep that we are archiving, keep that language.
And to that end, for another discussion, it begs the question, what are the values of this sitting board for communications and history for archiving, not the entire organization? You see deeds and everything like what Dusty does in the recorder's office, it's phenomenal. For what is, decisions that are made at this board and how they're made are valuable. And they should be there for in fifty years, somebody shows up and says, what were those yahoos doing back in twenty twenty-four? Why did they do that? They need to do this. Or it'll be a research project for some, somebody's university treaty or something like that. So, okay.
All right. Other items that we want to take a look at?
Well, I sent you my list of questions. I think I copied you when I.
You copied me.
Yeah. So another one that was mentioned was the committees versus our, our other responsibilities. And I just wanted clarification about forwarding minutes to the administrator. And just want to make sure we're all thinking this on the same page with this, that it's so that like restorative justice and I wrote down Nemo Jet, the YMCA advisory, the hospital board, those minutes are not being forwarded to the.
Right, we don't have a policy that does that. And that may be something that we want to consider. It's, you know, it's a lot of minutes and that's also, do we want to consider that a commissioner responsibility? Or is it the responsibility of that group to send it to our administrator?
But that, that's where this discussion comes up because I think there's a variety of what, what is really happening with different commissioners and I just want to make sure we're all aware of what we're doing and agreeing with this. So when it says committees and somebody reads this, they think that every committee you're on is being forwarded to the county administrator. They could think that. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page about that. Is that what we expect or not? The other one was.
Before we move on, where, where is that?
That was just a question that she brought up about where, when we're referring to committees, is it all the committees that we participate in?
There's a spot in there, yeah. It says committee minutes will go to the administrator.
Right now, as far as I'm aware, the only minutes that are collected are those that are on the website that are listed as county committees. So perhaps we should make a reference to those county committees.
Yes, that's what, just for clarification.
Madam Chair, for, so just to, just to clarify, I mean, there is already a means for board members to share information about their committee activities at the end of each meeting. And so is that insufficient? Is that, or, I'm just trying to understand.
That's the, I'm raising the question. I know that we get historical minutes attached. We get different ones attached and then, but we don't get everything attached. And I just want to make sure if there's an expectation or that we're supposed to do that, okay. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page of what we expect each other to submit and attach to our board packets for information.
I don't personally feel an obligation to send or forward all the minutes. I think that would be overwhelming for our administrative assistant to be getting all of that information. I think it should be minutes for the committees that are listed on our county website.
Okay.
You know, I'm thinking Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway, GTA, there's lots of groups. You know, we'd have a hundred and twenty sets of minutes every month if we did that. I think that's a little overkill. I think our commissioner updates and what we currently have on our website is very adequate.
I tend to agree with that. I just want to make sure when it says committee meeting, because the public doesn't underst, they see our list of assignments and what we attend and they think, they can think that those are all county committees.
Right.
And they can have access to those minutes.
So we'll clarify that language. I think that's a good.
Think it needs to be.
Good part, yep.
Just clearer.
And by, I could be wrong here, broad stroking here. I think there is access to all of those, just not in our system. And so I think, do we want the burden on our staff in our system? Or if someone has a specific question about a particular regional organization, that we can point them in that direction and say?
Right. So I think. Like the U.S. Forest Service, go to their website, get that in.
Yeah, I'm even thinking of like, you know, a home consortium or AHA or AUA, you know, like those are public organizations that have their own, their own staff and record-keeping. And it's, yeah, I could see where it gets super overwhelming and redundant to try to encapsulate all those. But yeah, I think I agree with the standing committees, county, county committees, that makes sense.
I'd just like to have that clarified.
Yeah, 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 good call.
All right, excellent. Commissioner Starley, did you have anything in the bylaws you wanted to do?
Oh, all right. If you want to just keep going, I might just jump around, that's fine.
Go ahead.
The other ones were per diems. And I think that was shared about not all of our committees currently are paying per diems for our advisory board.
Correct.
And so if we make it a policy, whose budget is it coming out of because?
It comes out of the departmental budget.
And.
Right. So it would be per diems when prescribed by an organization's bylaws. Because some of the bylaws indicate that they will or will not accept.
Okay, highway department, right now, the highway advisory committee is not paying per diems for highway advisory committee.
And what is in their bylaws?
There is no bylaws, as far as I know. It's just the highway advisory committee.
Information sharing.
Yeah.
All right, so we would want the language to read per diems when, when chosen to be provided by a department.
Yeah, because I think, and there's the budget and facilities, advisory committee also doesn't currently pay per diems. So you would have to instruct all department heads to include that in the budget process if they so choose. And that's what I just think clarification of who makes that determination then.
Yeah. And from what I understand, it's a decision that the group makes and it's in their bylaws. So if we have groups that don't have bylaws, then we need to make sure that that happens.
Brady, does the budget committee have bylaws? I haven't seen that either. Do you know? The advisory committee?
I'm not aware of any.
No, not specifically.
And see, airport advisory does have bylaws.
Yeah. No, most, most of the committees that I know don't have bylaws per se. But we have a pretty consistent practice, I think. So maybe just clarification of what, how it actually operates.
So just eliminate the word bylaws and say per diems when chosen to be provided by departments or groups or committees.
Well, so this is the discussion part of this is I don't.
I want time to think about this some more.
I want this document to truly reflect what actually is happening. And I was concerned, because I'm like, ooh, I know that's not happening. That's where-
So our handbook is different than a per diem policy. They're separate. Our handbook should reflect what our policy is.
Okay. Well, I'm reading this saying everybody gets a per diem.
Uh-huh.
And if that's not true, that's why I want to clarify language.
Will be provided when chosen to by departments or committees. So that language would need to change. Okay. You had another one, you said?
Ah, it's okay.
All right.
Commissioner Starley, did you have any?
All right. Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Mills?
Um, no, thank you.
All right. So we will take these items and I will send them to Attorney Hickon. And then we will come back either at the next COW or at our next meeting when she is available and get that on our agenda. Commissioner?
I was just wondering, is, are, is this clarified? Or do we have, like, are you, are there? The issues are brought up, thank you. Is there consensus now on what the board wants to do regarding those issues? I mean, we have Attorney Hickon to, to bounce ideas off and maybe get some more clarification, but just looking to keep things moving, right? There's no rush, but just want to make sure we're making progress here. So, don't want to just go into the next meeting and, right?
Yeah.
Have more discussion about the issues that we have brought up and thought could use some discussion. Does my question make any sense?
Yes, exactly the point.
Right.
Yep.
That is, and so have we had enough adequate conversation
Right.
about these issues? Anything else that might be popping up as we discuss
Right.
in this last six and a half minutes? Or should we actually give ourselves the time to
Oh, yeah.
review one more time
For sure.
with the attorney
Yeah.
close by, to craft the language and to come up with a completed document.
Yeah, my, my, I guess my question was just, uh, there certainly can be more thoughts or whatever, but do we as a board need more discussion on like the committee bylaws and any changes? Or is it seeming like your question was reconciled?
Yeah, I just wanted those items addressed for clarification purposes.
Spell it out.
All right. Oh, Madam Chair, no, that's the word clarification. That's where we are now. Send them back to Molly, have her clarify it, come back to us, go over it again so that everybody's comfortable with the expectations. Okay.
Yeah, and so just one thing that Commissioner Johnson said was reflecting what's being done, right? And I think that's important to have consistency and to have it reality, right?
Yeah.
My mind is kind of how do we want things done? Not what is being done, but how do we want it to be? Is, is this how we want things to be, even if it's not currently happening? You know, like, what are we, what are we aiming for? And, and so that's another angle to look at it. And I don't have a strong opinion, but if you had some items, right, that were brought up, that's where I was thinking we might want more discussion.
I agree. And that's why I was prepared to bring this up and let's add, add the committee of the whole to say, how do we feel? What do we want?
And I feel like the per diem piece is important because we've had challenges getting people to participate in committees. We don't have a lot of applicants for vacant positions. And so maybe by establishing a policy where people are paid and are given mileage, that would encourage people to participate.
I, I tend to agree. It's just, if it's not happening in places
Right.
and we feel like it should be, then we need to spell that out. And maybe that's where the questions are coming from, so.
We have kind of our handbook and then our policies. Yeah.
And so that's, I guess, my question that maybe isn't clear, is that, is that what we want? Do we want our committees to have the per diems? Or do we want it to leave it at the committee discretion? Or is that kind of what you're coming for?
Well, yeah, because I talked to one department head and said, I want to put that in my budget.
Sure, sure.
Well, do we tell them, you have to?
Right.
That's, that's our, what I wanted to talk about. Where do we want to go?
And that also might be a great discussion with the committees that we're in, to bring this up the next time we gather. You know, how does the group feel about this? Find out about the people who are participating on committees? And what do they think?
I keep cutting Administrator Yarkey off, but take it.
No.
Yeah, I just thought it might be helpful to get a better inventory of which committees are doing the per diems and which aren't. And then we can address those directly and have those conversations. Because right now, I'm not even totally aware of which committees for the citizens.
Brady sent me up.
Nice.
Yeah, I don't know if this went out to everybody, but
I think so.
No.
So, we should probably send this out to everybody. Or do you want to just talk about them? I can go through them.
Yeah, we can go through them.
So Budget and Facilities Advisory, they're all virtual meetings. There's no per diems or mileage being offered or asked for. The Extension Community Center Board, $30 per meeting and mileage, that's currently being paid. The Cook County Local Mental Health Advisory Council, there's $30 per meeting and mileage, currently paid for those who request it. Public Health and Human Services Advisory Council, $30 per meeting and mileage, currently paid for those who request it. Public Health Human Services Board, $30 per meeting and mileage, currently paid for those who request it. So Public Health Subcommittee of the Public Health and Human Service Advisory Council, $30 per meeting and mileage, currently paid for those who request it. And the next three are the, are the same. So I'll just read the titles. Child Care Solutions Subcommittee, Active Living Steering Committee, and the Substance Misuse Prevention Coalition, those are all $30 per meeting, no mileage, currently paid for those who request it in all cases. And I'm, I'm not sure, we didn't dig in, didn't have a long survey. Like, this may be because they're all virtual, so there's no mileage isn't even discussed. Highway Advisory Committee, no per diem or mileage offered or paid. Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, $30 per meeting and mileage, and that includes mileage for site visits, and that's currently being paid. The Revolving Loan Fund Committee, $30 per meeting and mileage. Off and on, it was paid for some long period of time, hasn't been paid. Nothing's been paid since 2017. No one requests it on this group. Airport Commission, $30 per meeting and mileage, and that's currently being paid. So.
Commissioner White? Do you have a, somewhere, probably not right now, as to how much is being paid, paid out for these different meetings?
No.
How many people are actually requesting a per diem?
Yeah, so that'd be another, another survey.
I'd like to see that, because it seems that there's a lot of meetings associated with Public Health and Human Services that are offering per diems and mileage. And I was just wondering, how many people actually avail themselves of that? Because I get the sense that for some, in some committees, people are doing it as a public service. It's a way to give to their community and-
I'd say in all of them.
Well, yeah. I mean, it's, they're not doing it for any money. They're not doing it because they would get paid too much.
No, I don't think anyone is. I mean, 30 bucks will get you away, but-
It'll get me home and back. There'll be a-
Barely. I, one thing I've noticed is some committees, the leaders of some committees will say, please get me your per diem mileage reimbursements in, so I can do that. And other ones don't necessarily offer that. So, and if the members of those boards aren't given that opportunity, I don't know how many would ask necessarily too, so. But I think those expenditures would be an important factor in this discussion.
Commissioner Johnson? I just thought of another, Parks and Trails, do they have bylaws?
They do have bylaws, yeah.
Do they pay a per diem?
That's a good question. I just pulled that up.
And the revolving loan fund has bylaws now?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to see what's-
Yeah.
No, I pulled up the agenda, not the minutes. I'm sorry.
It's, it's interesting that, you know, there is a lack of consistency. Certainly, this is something that warrants further discussion. And, you know, we do have a per diem policy, and we probably need to look at that and review it clearly. All right. Well, we have some homework for Attorney Hickon and homework for our Audit of Treasure.
Any other, well, let me know if you don't think of it today, any other questions, clarifications?
Okay.
In the-
And if you could send that chart out so all commissioners have it, that would be helpful. Thank you. All right. We will move on then to item number seven, but you know, let's take a short break and come back at 10 o'clock.
And I, I think Administrator Yarkey wanted to say something earlier.
Oh, no.
I just want to make sure we, he gets his time if he wants it.
You want to say it before we leave?
I, I appreciate that. I just, I wanted to say I appreciate the discussion, and I think there is a need for consistency. Because, you know, if we just say, well, the department can decide, or the committee can decide, well, that's not really clear. So having that kind of clarity from, from this board would be really helpful.
Thank you. All right. We will take a short break and be back at 10 o'clock. Welcome back, everyone, to our Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. We are coming back from a short break. And due to a guest that we have, a representative of North Shore Waste, we're going to jump ahead in our agenda to item 8B, fiscal year 2025 congressionally-directed spending. And if Administrator Yarkey, you'd like to introduce the topic?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the cover sheet indicates, we received an email last week from the offices of Senators Klobuchar and Smith announcing that applications are being taken for congressionally-directed spending or earmarks. The email came out on April 17th. The deadline to apply is April 26th, which is this Friday. And that's a very short window, of course, but we had been expecting this, so we're ready for it. One thing that I wanted to mention, so the county board has supported a couple of applications that we've made to the state, to MMB, for state bonding for a couple of projects, one being the Judicial Center, the other being the Transfer Station. And so those would be two projects that would be eligible for some of this congressionally-directed spending. Yesterday, I spoke to Orion DeFranco, who is an aide for Senator Smith, and was talking with him about the kinds of funding that would be available for these projects. And basically, there's a category of funding through the USDA. It's called a Rural Development Community Facility Grant. Both these projects would qualify for that. In speaking with Orion, I was asking him, what is a typical award for a project like this? And he said that in the past, awards have typically ranged from about 1.25 million to about 1.75 million. As you well know, because we talked about it at the last business meeting, the estimated cost for the Judicial Center ranges from 27 to about $33 million. And so if we were to apply for one of these grants through the senators, it would only put a small, small dent in the total cost of that Judicial Center project. I am not comfortable that that would be a good thing to do at this point. In fact, I'm not comfortable at all, because I think in order for us to really make an informed decision about moving forward on that, we really need to, now that we have the estimated cost of the Judicial Center, I think we need to do another update of our financial management plan to see how that would look. My feeling is that without significant state and federal assistance, the cost of the project is simply too much to try to put on local taxpayers. So in thinking about our best approach for applying for this current round of congressionally-directed spending, it seems to me that rather than having the Judicial Center application compete with the Transfer Station project, I think our best bet and the best benefit for the community is for us to pursue congressionally-directed spending for the Transfer Station project. The amount that's available is a better fit for the total project cost, which is about $5 million. It would take a bigger chunk out of the project cost. And I think we need to really regroup and have more discussion about the Judicial Center. I know there are a lot of folks in the community who are really anxious about it. I share that anxiety. I think it's obviously a really big expense that we would be undertaking, and I think we really need to pause on that. And so my recommendation today would be that we submit an application to the feds for congressionally-directed spending for the Transfer Station that we would be doing in partnership with North Shore Waste.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Johnson? I think that's a great idea. I agree with you 100% on this. Other commissioners? I know I had the same feeling, Commissioner Johnson. When I learned of this, I thought, this financially is a much better fit and a very significant piece that we can do for our Transfer Station, which impacts everyone here in Cook County. I think it's really, really important. And given the range of dollars, 1.25 to 1.75 million, that's a drop in the bucket for a Judicial Center. And so I think putting all our eggs in one basket and really trying to go after these rural development funds for the Transfer Station would be wise. Other thoughts? Commissioner Starley?
I agree totally to support that. It brings something to our county for everybody, no matter where we are with composting or trash or whatever. So I think it's, I would support that.
Commissioner White?
We don't need to be in competition with a project, with a business that is doing something for the good of the entire county, something that's necessary, like really necessary. So, yeah, we can have more discussion about our need for a justice center down the road, but right now, we need, without a doubt, we need to support the waste program, so...
Commissioner Mills?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. How much flexibility is enabled with congressional discretionary funding? Like, how fleshed out of a plan does it require, and can we change that plan?
I don't know the answer to that offhand, and I don't know. Linda Juric is here in the room with us, and I don't know if she has any insight on that particular question or arena. I think we'd probably have to ask the senators' offices about that.
The reason I'm asking is just because of our last discussion regarding the potential justice center. You know, I had raised questions about it. If we're going to be spending this much, is it really covering what our future needs are going to be? And I thought it was a very good answer that actually, we can't change that because we've already made that request. And so I want to make sure if we're making this request, that we're covering our future community needs, such as what's the future of our current recycling center? And is there a springboard we can use, the waste transfer facility, to integrate with that? And, like Commissioner Starley said, composting. And so I would love to have some flexibility to try to address more of that, but...
So, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have talked with the USDA state-level program director, and he specifically said these dollars cannot be used for recycling centers. So this is really about that basic infrastructure that we need for a facility. We can certainly, once we have that facility, there's lots and lots of dollars out there for composting and recycling. This is much harder to do, to pay for this kind of infrastructure. And frankly, it's become more urgent. We currently have a permit by rule, which means that we can only take in 120 yards of trash, you know, like, a day. And last summer, we were more like 700 some days because of the construction and the tourism. And so the only way we can actually be processing the amount of garbage that is being generated in this county is by having a building. Because the building, it's a different kind of a permit, and you build the building to the size that you need, and then there aren't limits like this. So we're running afoul with the Minnesota PCA right now. And so this is really taking, this is really actually not only a future need, but it's like the summer's need.
Yep.
So, you know, this is something where we're working very hard on.
It's last summer's need. It's the summer before, is it?
Right. So that...
But I want to prevent future fires, right?
Right, absolutely. But this particular funding, I was cautioned, he asked me very specifically, "This isn't for recycling, is it?"
Wow.
Yeah.
Ironic, isn't it?
Yeah, it would be. It's a different kind of infrastructure bill, so...
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Other questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to direct our administrator to go after the congressionally-directed spending for North Shore Waste.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Support. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will jump back to our regular agenda and go up to item seven, auditor powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these are some donations we're being requested to accept. This is for the bridge replacement, the Poplar River Bridge that's used by the Rootsen Trail Riders Snowmobile Club, others do. And they're trying to replace that bridge, and other snowmobile clubs are trying to help, and they like to donate money. The reason this is on the agenda is because it's just a little unusual. When they get their money from pull tabs, they're under the control of the gambling board, and the gambling, state gambling board said, "You got to transfer your money through the county in order to give it to another club."
We got to wash it.
I didn't use that language. I guess they want some oversight of some sort from us. So that's why the request is here. So it's, right now, we have donations of $1,000 from the Wood City Riders of Cloquet, 1,000 from the K-M Snowdrifters of Casin, Minnesota, and 5,000 from the Cook County Snowmobile Club. So asking to approve those donations for that use.
Commissioner Mills?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the donations of $1,000 from Wood City Riders of Cloquet, and $1,000 from Kramer's Snowdrifters of Cassin, Minnesota. And there was another one, too. 5,000 from the Cook County Snowmobile Club.
Support. All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Commissioner Mills?
My apologies. I'd like to amend the motion to define what the donations are for, and it's the replacement of the small bridge over the Poplar River.
All right, thank you. And are you comfortable with that, Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. All right, we have a motion and support. Anything additional? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a request for approve a repurchase application for a tax forfeit property. So the applicants are the daughters of Kenneth Bodell, who passed away a few years ago. And they're able to make this request because they qualify as close relatives. The applicants explain their hardship was due to not receiving a notice of delinquency or forfeiture. It went to the deceased household, and their mother is in no condition to read and understand either. So it's a requirement that the sale price include all the taxes that were levied and unpaid, plus any canceled taxes and any taxes that would have been levied had the parcel not gone forfeit. So we had to calculate additional taxes because it went forfeit last year. There are no taxes this year, but you have to calculate this and come up with that so that you make the citizens, the rest of the taxpayers, whole, at the very least. So all of those costs, taxes, penalties, interest, it would have applied to the parcel if it hadn't gone forfeit. And that total cost of repurchase is $10,641.41 if paid by cash or if a four-year contract is completed in the month of April. So children of a previous owner have six months to complete a repurchase if the owner himself was alive and was wishing to repurchase. Would have a year to do that, but six months for other relatives. So the timing is pretty short, have until June 15th to complete this. The purpose, to put, obviously, to put the property back in the tax rolls and then get the property back in the hands of the people who previously owned it for their benefit. So they've already given us the check for what they saw on the screen, what was already due for delinquent taxes, and they know of the additional cost for the calculated taxes that the assessor's office did for us. And they're ready to make that payment, so, and they intended to be a cash purchase, but they could change that, so... Any questions?
Commissioner Johnson? Is this raw land, or is there buildings on it?
Oh, there's a building, yeah.
There is a building. Other questions? If not, Commissioner Mills?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the repurpose application for the tax forfeit property in question here. That would be, where is it defined here? I guess it's the property of Kenneth Bodell.
Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
And actually, you're approving a resolution. All those details are in the resolution, so... The exact address of the land, legal address, east 200 feet to the west, 800 feet, Lot 1, Section 28, 65, 3 West. And I should mention that some aren't familiar with this. We haven't had a repurchase since 2019. So they don't happen often here. They happen all the time in other counties, but we don't typically have a lot of these. So people usually catch them and make the payment before it goes actually forfeit, unless it's severed minerals, in which case they're happy to get rid of them typically.
So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item C, which is the revolving loan fund.
Yeah, so this is a request from Aaron Shogren and his wife Teresa to purchase the Putt and Pets LLC. That's the mini golf course just to the west of town. Aaron's father is retiring, selling the business, and this is a request for a $75,000 loan, which is less than a third, which is in our guidelines. We provide up to a third of the cost generally. It's an 18-hole miniature golf course, including, you've all seen the farm animals, and gemstone mining. This would be an interest rate of 1% over the 10-year T-bond because they're including collateral of a second mortgage on the business property, and there is significant room for our mortgage, given the appraised value that they had to have done on that property for the sale. But they're also providing their personal guarantees of the owners, and the committee feels that's a strong guarantee. Unanimous approval of the committee and recommendation for the board.
Commissioner Johnson, anything from the meeting you'd like to add?
No, just a good discussion.
All right, great, thank you. Is there a motion to approve a $75,000 loan with a term of 20 years to Putt and Pets?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Commissioner Mills, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the current fund balance in the memo here, Brady. Thank you. And forgive my ignorance, and we've just gone over the updated guidelines, but do we, I can't remember, do we have a fund balance minimum, and would we need one for any reason?
Not technically. You make loans if you have the money, and if you don't, you don't.
Right, but we don't have any operation, like, we don't need to have, right?
We, you could, depending on, you know, if the values are that you want to, let's say, reserve some funding, and the committee talks about this all the time. If you want to reserve some funding for smaller applicants, rather than if you get three or four big ones, and you know you're going to draw it down very quickly, do you want to save? We don't have any particular guideline on that. save? We don't have any particular guideline on that. But, yeah, don't always put the fund balance, but we probably should because you should weigh in on that and have that knowledge anyway.
Thank you.
And what's coming up.
Commissioner Johnson.
That was part of our discussion is, we've had some larger loans. We know some more maybe in the works. And how did we as a committee feel comfortable? How are we going to make decisions going forward? But it's also interesting to see the list of loans that have been made and are paying and the amount that's coming in every month. So that's another interesting number to look at.
Significant revenue there.
I can't tell you the number off my head.
I think it was 16 or...
Somewhere in the 16, maybe 17. We jumped with the, with the Seacraft, the apartment.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is just a corrected legal description on a conditional use permit. This only arose because we were looking at Lutzen Trail Breakers Snowmobile Club. They've had a permit to have a storage facility on county property for some years, I think since 2012. Yeah, it's right there. And so we're looking at where exactly is that lease and et cetera. And in looking at this, Courtney Bernier noticed that the recorded resolution for the conditional use permit was incorrect. It didn't match what was on here. So that's just like a typo, only it's a large typo. So we figured this is the way to correct it. We need to record it. We need to record something. So we need the board to approve a corrected resolution. And then we'll record that and it'll make sense to people that are researching the property.
Well, I'm appreciative that we found that error and that we can correct it. Any questions? Commissioner Mills?
No question. I'd just like to make a motion to approve the correction of the legal description on the recorded resolution. Originally document number 116778 for the conditional use permit for the snowmobile club.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item is a seasonal liquor license application. And this is on the, on the agenda here to talk about because it's a new application, not a renewal. So this is the Adventure Fix Business OP, I'm not sure what that stands for, LLC, for a seasonal on-sale beer, on-sale wine, and strong beer and special Sunday liquor license. This is for the owner Jacob Seltz at 7902 West Highway 61 in Schroeder. It's doing business as the Schroeder Short Stop. And this is all, if you approve it, it's subject to county attorney, county sheriff approval, liquor liability insurance proof also.
Questions that we have for auditor powers? Commissioner Johnson?
I'm curious about a seasonal liquor license versus a year-round. And is it because this is going to be a seasonal business? Or, and how many licenses do we allow? Do you know?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't recall a limit on these outside of the city. There's, so, but I'm gonna look.
Madam Chair, that building is in what they used to call the Schroeder Short Stop, the little gas station.
I know the building.
And he has the bicycle rental in the summer. So that's why it's seasonal. He wouldn't be renting bikes unless he decides to do snowmobiles.
Well, that's why I wondered if that was, as far as seasonal, if we don't have a year-round, as far as numbers, and I was curious. That's all we had left.
We have lots, yeah. We have lots of seasonal because people shut down for parts of the year. And a lot of these operations that are up the trail, often the distances from Grand Marais.
Other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the new seasonal liquor license application at the Schroeder Short Stop.
Thank you Commissioner Starley. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, just curious. I think this is great for the community of Schroeder, you know, commercial. I'm just curious, as far as approving liquor license, did this, was this brought up before the town board? And do they support a bar?
The township board?
Yeah, township board. Do you know? I'm just, I was curious how the neighbors in the community felt about having a liquor license there.
I think they promote it as a good business for sure.
That was my first reaction, but it just dawned on me, oh, I wonder how this works. My first one.
All right. Any other questions? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you auditor powers. Administrator Yorki.
All right. Thank you Madam Chair. Item 8A is the 2024-2027 Organizational Strategic Plan. What I'd like to do this morning is walk through that plan and kind of discuss it and make sure that the public is aware of what all is in it. Before we do that though, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that we undertook to put this plan together. We began the process at the beginning of last year. And one thing that we recognized early on was that we were going to have to really involve staff in providing input into this plan. Because if it was simply a top-down exercise, if it was just department director saying, here's what we think's important, that wouldn't be a fully informed plan and it wouldn't have buy-in from staff. And so we convened a steering committee. And I want to recognize the folks who participated in that committee because they did a lot of heavy lifting. So we had several department directors, Robbie Haas from the highway department, Rowan Watkins from our MIS or IT department, Allison McIntyre with Public Health and Human Services, and Allison Plummer from Human Resources. And I also want to recognize Leah Ekstrom, who was in that role before Allison was hired. And so Leah also had a lot of participation in the steering committee. We also had Lisa Sorley, who's our accountant over in the highway department. And before he retired, Gary Fagerman also participated as a supervisor. And then last but not least, Commissioners Johnson and White also participated in the steering committee and provided a lot of great, great input. So, a lot of heavy lifting by that group. And they really provided great leadership in, and a great sounding board in putting all of this information together. As I mentioned, we did involve departments in getting the input. We had departmental meetings at the beginning to talk about where we are as an organization with strengths and weaknesses and external opportunities and threats. And then we also got their input as we were starting to, after we collected that information, started talking about what our vision and mission should be. And so we collected a lot of feedback from people on those two questions as well. As your agenda packet indicates, we, we had, actually we had some pretty amusing discussions about our vision and mission statements. Some of them, one comment I remember particularly because it was about a mission statement that I really liked, that focused on excellent service. I forget exactly what the phrase was, but somebody said it sounded like a...
Used car salesman.
A used car salesman or a hamburger ad or something like that. So we decided not to use that. But the, the vision statement...
Make it your way or something?
That would be, hey, maybe we should, maybe we should talk about this some more. Anyway, so where we ended up for a vision statement, and again, we, we really did a lot of surveying of staff to see how this landed with them. And what, what we agreed to finally was trusted and superior public services as a vision statement. And this is something that's aspirational. We always want to behave and, and act in a way that earns the trust of the public. And we always want to strive to be excellent and to provide the best services that we can. And then as far as our mission statement goes, we had, we had a number of different possibilities. Some of them were very concise, others were pretty verbose. But ultimately, what people seemed to like the most was the mission statement that we already have, which is supporting community through quality public service. And so those are the vision and mission statements that we are proposing for your approval today. Again, we, we had open houses in November to kind of go through all the goals and objectives that we had identified. Some of the feedback that we got from folks was that the scope of the plan felt like it was too big. What we were trying to do as the steering committee was to develop a plan that really forced us to stretch and to be ambitious. We were not, as a group, we decided we did not want to have a plan that was going to be easy to achieve in three years. And so if we, if we have too many things in here and we fall short of achieving all of them, I think that is better than having a really basic plan that is easy to accomplish. So, so that was some of the feedback that we got. We also got feedback that the timelines for, for the plan may be unrealistic. And that, that brings up a really important point. So you're being asked today to approve this plan, but it is not something that is set in stone. If you have ever implemented a strategic plan, you know that you run into opportunities that you didn't anticipate. You also encounter obstacles that you weren't expecting. And so it's important to know that while we have made our best guess about who's gonna be doing what and what the, what the targeted dates of completion are, those are subject to change. And the way that we're going to be implementing this, we've already set up quarterly meetings with people who are listed as responsible parties in, in this plan. And we're gonna be having quarterly meetings to track progress. We're gonna be using a system of color coding, action items that are moving forward on schedule. Those would be green. If there's an action item that is moving forward, but maybe not as fast as we wanted it to, or there's some other minor obstacle, those would be yellow. If there's a major obstacle to implementing an action step, those would be coded red. And we're gonna be going through, again, quarterly with all responsible parties to talk about where we are. And then based on that report, we're going to share that information with the board so that you all know how we're doing in terms of getting this plan implemented. We'll share it with staff, of course, so that they know. Because really, you can see there are a number of responsible parties, but, but really, everybody in the organization is responsible for, for ensuring the success of the plan. So, again, we've made our best guesses as to what we're gonna try to do and when we're gonna try to get it done. But everybody should be well aware that things are subject to change. So, I'm gonna pause right there to see if there are any questions about the process or if Commissioners Johnson and White have any comments that they'd like to make about their, their participation in the steering committee or, or anything else. I would, I would welcome that.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last few meetings, so I don't know the answer to this question. I'm wondering, after this got put together, how, and I think you sent out emails to staff to comment, I'm wondering how many responses you received?
Fifteen.
And what, fifteen?
Fifteen.
And did that, what was the feeling from the staff overall?
Yeah.
Concerns?
Generally, the, the major points from the feedback are people generally agreed that we're focusing on the right things, which is really good to hear. Again, concerns about the scope and the feasibility of getting things done by the timelines that we discussed. And that's why I'm being really clear that, you know, we're gonna have to make adjustments. We know that as we're implementing this. But again, we wanted to err on the side of having maybe a little bit too much in this plan versus too little. So those were kind of the high points.
Any questions? Commissioner White, anything regarding your participation?
It was a, it was a very good, a lot of conversation, a lot of very thoughtful give and take. What would work, what wouldn't work. The people in the room knew about these different operating systems, organizational formats that they'd been part of before. This was all above my pay grade. I don't do any of those things. But they really had good discussions about what did work and what didn't work, and about the need for, if you start this, it works, but you can't be quitting halfway through. There's no value in that. So, that was, that was very good. We have some very thoughtful, individual department heads. And we always got to eat.
I always brought snacks. Cause strategic planning is not something generally that really inspires people, but it's really important. And so having food is helpful to that.
One of the things I found really, that I, I'm really valuing is the fact that on a quarterly basis, you're coming together to review it. I've been a part of many strategic plans over the years, and sometimes they get put on a shelf. And so, thanks to the group for recognizing you need to come back to it regularly and share with staff, share with us and the public how we're, we're doing on our plan. I think that's really important.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
So, I'll go ahead and talk.
Madam Chair, Commissioner White.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say that we got through the first two goals. Extensive, extensive conversations and putting it together. But we never finished the third goal to have that one last meeting. Though what has been produced here today is pretty good. I, we do as a board or as an organization, put information out there with Facebook, Cook County homepage, WTI P, Boreal Media. But as I contend, that the face-to-face opportunities for people to interact, interact, not just speak to us, but to have conversations with the leadership of this county board, that Ginny goes to the town halls and can have those conversations. I think that's imperative to have, to build trust, really imperative. So, it's a start, as Administrator Yorki said. But to that end, where we talk about hosting traveling commuting meetings, or, that's not been fleshed out at all. But District One will be continuing to have town hall meetings about a variety of to-be-determined topics. And it will be an opportunity besides to build trust with the county and to help taxpayers understand what's going on in the county. It'll be an opportunity to strengthen the community itself in District One, to get to know our neighbors better.
And I can certainly see sharing this, like when I am about to begin my league association tour for the summer and, and going out on weekends to those meetings. And this will be something that we'll definitely be sharing with all the groups. You know, it's a, a nice tool. It's very succinct that people can take a look at and ask questions about. So I appreciate the format as well. Other questions or comments?
All right. If not, I'd just like to kind of go walk through the plan real quickly. It's, it's pretty detailed, as you know. But I wanted to talk about what the strategic initiatives are and why we landed on those. Number one is enhancing organizational efficiency and resiliency. And this is something that, you know, just having been through a major pandemic and seeing how disruptive and chaotic events like that can be, and also continuing to deal with turnover and the challenges that we turnover and the challenges that we face when somebody who's been in a position for a long time leaves, we want to make sure that we have processes and procedures in place so that as those things happen, we can continue to operate in an efficient way and get things done in the face of change. And so the first thing under Initiative One, Goal 1.1, is implementing the capital improvement plan. And we've been talking about that a lot ever since we started the development of that plan back at the beginning of 2022. And obviously, last business meeting, we had the presentation of the master plan for the Judicial Center, which, as I mentioned, now that we know kind of what that looks like and what the potential costs would be, I think there's a need for us to pause and talk about what other opportunities there might be for addressing current space needs and also trying to continue to look for funding for that project and making sure that if the board does decide to move forward on it, which you all have not, you've only authorized the development of a master plan, that we have a sound plan, a financial plan for getting it done. And so all the things that we've been talking about in terms of deferred maintenance, we continue to work on. I'm continuing to work with CRBPS to develop bid specs for the 23 and 24 projects. That information has not been as timely as I had hoped it would be. We're sorting through that. Then Goal 1.2, upgrading systems. Here, there are a lot of things that relate to software that we use. We have a lot of systems that we're using currently that are pretty old. That presents vulnerabilities, both in terms of information security and then also just dealing with the time needed to work with antiquated systems. Some of that requires that we input data multiple times, which is obviously a waste of time and effort. So the more efficient we can become through the use of technology, the better. And so 1.2 focuses on different ways that we could do that. There was a common, public comments about the cost involved in this and also suggestion that approval of the plan equates to a commitment to spend resources. That is not accurate. Anything that we do under this plan, if we decide that we need to buy new software, that would come before the board as a recommendation. You'd have to approve that expenditure. So the approval of this plan today in itself does not commit to the expenditure of any levy dollars. So, and I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. I'm not going to touch on every objective, but I do want to talk about all the goals. Goal 1.3 is up.
That's okay.
I only saw movement.
Yeah, I did have something, but that's okay. I can wait.
I mean, we can take questions as they come up.
Concerning, I totally understand that we're not committing to funds, but as a commissioner and knowing how sometimes things happen, we approved this plan. And then you have this, because there is a lot of new spending in this proposed. And I just worry, I brought this up at the Highway Advisory Committee meeting the other day about this department wants this, this department wants this, this department wants this, all very good things. But as a commissioner, not everything can happen at the same time if we are really going to keep our levy under 5%. So that is what's concerning to me about approving this. And I think that's the concerns we heard this morning during our public comment, is that it's very easy to say, yep, that's what we want, because that's, we can see into the future, planning ahead. But then who and how, who gets to be first on the saying, oh, I'm ready for that money? I want it first. Where I would like to see this board also say, oh, maybe HR software is maybe more important than a new increase position over here. I don't know. But that's where I want, really want to make sure we are thinking long-term as a board about the individual spending items in here.
Yeah. And that's why I think the quarterly reporting is going to be really important, right? Because some things are going to be easier to accomplish than others. And where there are opportunities, like for example, if we find out, I'll just use the HR payroll software as an example. So we've been doing research on this and we've gotten some positive feedback, and then there are other issues that we're still sorting through. Buying new software by itself is not a guarantee that your processes are going to be better or easier. And so there's a lot of information that we're going to have to gather to understand how feasible these things are and what the potential timelines are. And so I appreciate the point that you're making, and that's why the quarterly tracking is important, because we can keep the board posted on kind of, here's what we're learning about, you know, Cass County's efforts to implement their new HR software, and here's some of the problems that they ran into. That is a really important part of the discussion and of your consideration of any future spending decisions.
I have another question about that one, then. So the key performance measures, I really like. Here's specifically how we'll decide if this works or not. But it only works if we know what we are right now. Are we tracking that information? Do we know what our payroll error rate is today?
We don't.
Yeah. So how do we know it's going to be reduced by 90%?
Well, absolutely. We need to have baselines, for sure. Yeah. So.
Commissioner?
And I really appreciate the very practical, the nuts and bolts of it. I think that's really important. When it comes to strategic planning, right, these are our aims, these are our goals. We can't do it all at once. But this is where we see our needs and where we want to go. It's just not exactly clear how we do that. But if we can agree on where we want to go, we have a much better chance of figuring out how to get there. But I agree that it's, the challenge is the prioritizing, the balance, and just making all the stars align.
Commissioner White?
And before we walk away from this baseline, right now, who's going to do it? How's it going to happen?
Not it.
Before we lose it. Before we lose it. Like, who in this organization?
Well, I mean, in
No, I mean, we have to set it up.
In our department, or in our organization, the monitor's office is responsible for payroll. So we'll have to work with Nick Honer to kind of assess, you know, what that is currently and then work on improving it. And I would say too, I mean, we have been working on that. That's something that Brady and Nick have been working on a lot, and I think we have made progress. But there's always room for improvement, always. All right. Moving on to Goal 1.3, this is updating policies and procedures and establishing new ones where there are gaps. I think our conversation about the per diem policy is a great illustration of how that can really simplify processes and create a clearer understanding of how we're doing things. And having those on paper or in pixels helps us when somebody leaves, to have processes identified so that if Brady walks out of here tomorrow, there aren't dozens of things that only he knows how to do and nobody else does. That's what Goal 1.3 is focused on.
I didn't tell anybody.
Well, I heard you're going to walk out today, but that you're coming back tomorrow. This is like not funny.
So Goal 1.4 is defining and managing departmental scopes of service through service-level agreements and policies and also just saying no. So, and this really relates to the experience that we've had over really a number of decades, where certain departments have been asked to do more and more, and there has not been a commensurate increase in resources for that department, which creates a mismatch between workload and staffing. And so trying to make sure that those two things correspond to each other and that we are not asking departments to do more than they have the staff or the financial resources to accomplish.
Commissioner Mills?
I was a little confused with that goal. And so I was wondering if instead of saying no, and just end recognizing limits. It wasn't clear exactly what we were saying no to. And I was like, well, if we're going to put that there, we should put it in all our goals just to be ready to say no.
Well.
Because sometimes we have to. So I was, I think it might be more clear and just to, and recognize limits, or staff limits, or department limits, or something, because that phrase confused me at least.
I appreciate that point.
Now, it made sense to me.
Well, you were in the, or maybe you weren't.
No, I was not. I was not. And I'll share an example where I contributed to the problem. Back when we had the Passion Pit Committee and we were talking about picking up trash and, so the city created and installed containers for the trash. We pick it up and we're still picking it up. That's not something that's our responsibility. All right. And those types of things have happened over the years. And I'm just going to, you know, talk about our maintenance department. We've added a lot to their plate when we shouldn't have. And so I like the idea of just say no.
I will say too, I mean, Commissioner White mentioned the excellence of the department directors on the steering committee. We have great department directors across the board, many different personalities. And some of our directors are really good at saying, no, I can't do that because I just don't have the resources. And others have a harder time doing that. And that's not good or bad, it just is. I appreciate, you know, people who want to be accommodating and helpful, but sometimes that creates issues that later come back to bite us. So yeah, I think that's kind of why we just phrases it bluntly.
It's okay to use that word sometimes.
Well, yeah, we need to do that regularly. It's still, I think, a confusing phrase. If dramatically even, define and manage and say no. Like, I think recognizing limits is a very clear, we need to recognize department limits. We need to recognize budget limits. And then that's maybe why we would say no. But our goal is not to say no.
Well, maybe, maybe the better way to put it is not taking on new work without additional resources.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That's a good point.
And you do that by recognizing limits, right?
Yes, I do. I wrote it down. Okay.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Commissioner Mills, you have to understand that this was not an easy committee to be on, and we needed some levity on occasion. And so you are now dissing to just say no.
Well, that's what you do to drugs.
I know.
Not to goals.
Nancy Reagan, just, Nancy Reagan?
Well, we know how that worked out.
Yeah. How did that work?
I appreciate that, thank you. No, I suspected there was some insider knowledge there, but it's just for the public's sake, for our future. Say all of us leave, right? Say we all lose our seats.
No one will miss us.
And say James walks and nobody is here to carry this plan. What in the world are they talking about there?
Drugs.
Right, right. So that's why I was hoping for some very clear phrases. No is a clear phrase, but the context is not.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Goal 1.5 is developing and regularly update comprehensive emergency management plans that address potential risks and hazards. This one includes a key performance measure that relates to the board. In talking with Mike Keporth, you guys have had emergency management training, where we've had the state office come in here and present. I think that's a really important thing to do on a regular basis, and so that is part of what we're planning to do moving forward. Implementing, Goal 1.6, implementing or establishing departmental succession plans, that's something that we are already working on. We do have some long-tenured directors who are thinking about retirement. And to the extent that we have folks internally who would be qualified to step into those roles, we need to be looking at that and making sure that as much as we can and as much as it makes sense to do so, that we provide a pathway for folks to move up into leadership positions. It's just a good thing to do, both from a kind of employee loyalty standpoint and also for just institutional knowledge. Because if you're hiring from within, you can have a level of continuity that you otherwise would not have. So that takes us to Strategic Initiative Two, which is investing in a highly trained, high-performing and engaged workforce. One thing to note about this initiative is that it is really heavy, puts a heavy burden on the HR department, because so much of this is related to staffing and staff training. And so Goal 2.1 is increasing HR staffing from 1.5 to 2.5 FTE to meet existing needs and enable the implementation of all items under Strategic Initiative Two. We did have some conversation with the board earlier this year about the fact that our last two HR directors have cited burnout as a reason for leaving the position. We know that the way the workload has been over the last number of years, that there's just too much for one and a half people to do. If we are adding the items under Initiative Two to the Human Resources Department's workload, that's an example of something that really requires an increase in resources. And so I just want to be really candid about that. We had a lot of discussion about that among the steering committee, and again, you all have had a little bit of opportunity to talk about that. We initially were talking about the possibility of bringing forward a request to hire for that position starting July 1 of this year. In subsequent conversations with Allison Plummer, our HR director, I am feeling less bullish on taking that approach. Part of the reason being that we just recently asked your approval of $280,000 of PILT dollars to invest in a new security system, cameras, et cetera. That was not a budgeted expense, and I do not want to get into the habit of coming forward with unbudgeted requests to the board. And so what I plan to do, and certainly I'm open to Commissioner's feedback on this, is to put that HR position in the 2025 budget proposal so that it would start January 1 of next year.
Commissioner Mills?
With that recommendation, you just took away an opportunity to say no.
We could say, I mean, you could say no.
Touche. Say no to no.
Absolutely.
Is that what we're discussing now?
No, not the no. Forget the no.
No, but the HR position. Yeah, because I'm wondering, the city has contracted for HR work to complete some of their, what they need done. I was talking with an individual this morning. They used an HR consultant to perform the work rather than putting another position on staff when we are already short of space. We haven't solved the problem on number one yet. And this relates to some of the other items on some of the other things that we really don't have a list of this is what we're going to accomplish. What duties, I guess here at Inventory Task, is on this one? But what of that task, what are we going to give out? And are there ways to combine some of those tasks that could be contracted out and solved in the interim or for a period without making the final decision to add another staff member at this time until we solve the problem in number one?
I think that's a, I think that's a really good point. I've been talking with Allison Plummer about this, and she's been working on a job description because you're exactly right. I mean, how, what duties would be allocated to that position? How would they be divided? How would they be divided among existing staff? Um, and, and I agree with you that we should always be looking for opportunities to, to use contracts to get things done, because in some cases, that can be a really efficient way of doing things. Um, and case in point, our, our review of job descriptions and classifications. Um, I think for the money that we're spending on that work, we're getting a lot of value out of it. And so I, I don't think that, um, adding staff is always the answer, but I do think in the situation where we know the workload is mismatched with our current staffing levels and we're talking about adding significant new responsibilities to Human Resources, I think it's a reasonable discussion to have, whether or not the board ultimately approves that proposal. I mean, that's something that'll have to be determined and it's, it's open to a lot more discussion, um, and your consideration of a job description that you haven't seen yet. So, um, that's something that we will bring forward as part of the 25 budget proposal.
And I really like the fact that you're, you're looking at, um, the 2025 budget for this particular item and Allison is feeling comfortable with that, that it gives her time to, to really dig into this.
That could also, um, stretch out the implementation timelines for some of the things under Initiative 2 if we don't, um, hire that position July 1 of this year. But again, everything is adjustable. And if there are good reasons for, for changing timelines, like if, you know, if we're not adding that position when we initially thought we were, that's, that's a good reason and a very, I think, understandable reason for, for making changes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that, that thought too about the contracting because, you know, in this situation, uh, or not this, recently, in recent years, we've had a huge lift for HR to do the updated job descriptions and, I mean, granted, our HRs maybe not doing the bulk of that work now, there's still a, a good amount of work they're doing in conjunction with DDA, um, but after that's done, what, I mean, it's not, it's not ever done, right? But after this huge lift, like maybe things will settle down a little bit and, and we'll be able to feel that out a little bit, um, more and see what our, our contracts could or should be, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think that's a really wise, uh, way to kind of assess what, and I know, I know you knew that too, James, I just wanna concur.
I mean, the, the other thing about the classification committee that used to be responsible for that work is that it consisted of department directors, some of our most highly paid people. Um, and so it's not just, it's not just the HR director, but it's also those people putting their time in to what was a pretty laborious process. I mean, it took a lot of work to, to sort through those issues and, and there's a cost to that and I, I don't know, but I would guess that it's probably close to, if, if not more than what we're spending to have DDA do it for us. Not to mention that it takes their time away from other work that they need to be doing, so.
Commissioner White.
Um, and the one thing about the workload for HR is we have a lot of people that leave, so their output, is that called outputting and inputting and what, giving more money didn't keep people here, so what is the issue? And if that can be, uh, identified and resolved, then perhaps there won't be that much, because it also is then a workload for MIS, cause you set up these, these laptops and security and, and for people to be walked through and, and then their training period. So, uh, it would benefit the entire organization to keep people from leaving.
So, um, moving on to Goal 2.3, um, and this is not anything new. I mean, we agreed that we need to, to do this and that's what David Drowne Associates is doing for us, is making sure that job descriptions are accurate, um, and so updating them on a three-year cycle to make sure they don't get out of date and that people are not, uh, people's actual jobs are, are far different from what is described in that job description. Um, Goal 2.4, doing a compensation study every three years to ensure competitive pay. Um, you know, the last time that we did a comp study back in 2022, um, we found a pretty strong misalignment with what was happening in the market and that was, um, for a number of reasons, but there was a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, I am not finding the word right now.
Take your time.
Um, Bob. Tree. No, it's not that. There's a lot of volatility in the labor market, right? So, so wages were really increasing at a rapid rate and, um, and that was partly a result of the, the pandemic. Um, a lot of people dropped out of the workforce, a lot of people, uh, changed jobs and, and it's really been for the last several years, a job seeker's market. I think that's cooling a little bit now from what I've heard, um, but still, um, we need to make sure that we are competitive, um, with, with other counties and other employers so that we're not having undue difficulty filling positions.
Commissioner Mills.
Um, my past trainings, um, around HR was a three to five-year, uh, study and so the group decided that three years was, was better, or is it just because of where we are now and what the job market is like now that we wanna, for this three-year plan, we have three years and maybe it'll transition to five-year?
Yeah, I, I think with the changes that are ongoing, if we, if we stretch that out to a five-year cycle, we'd probably find ourselves, uh, out of kilter again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Goal 2.5, implementing stay interviews to identify and address job satisfiers and dissatisfiers. This is something that Public Health and Human Services has piloted, um, with, I would say, good success, that is just talking with employees who, um, who are not necessarily contemplating leaving the organization, but just touching base with folks to find out what, what are you finding fulfilling about your job? Uh, what are some things that are, are causing you to be less satisfied with your job and trying to identify and address those, this dissatisfiers, um, before we have somebody who's just reached a point where they don't wanna be in the organization anymore. Uh, Goal 2.6, implement exit interview information sharing. Um, we've had frequent conversations, uh, here in the board meetings about exit interviews. Um, one thing to, to remind folks is that we cannot force, uh, employees who are leaving to conduct an exit interview. We, we always ask them if they'd be willing to do that. Um, and, uh, the other thing is even if somebody does agree to an exit interview, um, trying to tease out exactly what is going on in terms of their thinking about, uh, leaving the organization can be hard to do. Some people are gonna be really forthcoming about the things that have made them unhappy. Um, other folks may not wanna be as candid because they don't wanna burn bridges, you know? And so the, the, um, number of people that you're actually able to talk to and the quality of information that you may get from that process is really variable, um, but it's something that we should be striving to do and in fact, we do, uh, offer that to anybody who's leaving the organization.
Commissioner Mills.
I wonder if this might be an area where contracting might be, um, might have some more value, if there's a candidness that might be, um, provided with an outside exit interview, just an idea, not a strong thought, but.
That's an interesting idea. Of course, I mean, we would still know who is providing the feedback. Um, but, but you're right, I mean, talking to a, a third party might.
Maybe, or maybe it's the opposite, I don't know, it was just an idea.
Yeah. All right. Um, that brings us to Strategic Initiative Number 3, which is increasing transparency, accountability and information accessibility. Um, a lot of this relates to our public, um, external communication work. Um, as you know, we have a half-time, uh, public information coordinator, Todd Ford, who, uh, presented to you all at a recent committee of the whole meeting, who's doing really excellent work for us and really helping us keep the public informed about things that are happening in county government. Um, I, every, almost every day, I he, I hear and see comments from people that reflect a lack of understanding of county government processes and decision-making. And the more that we can, uh, more information that we can put out there, uh, in, in the paper, uh, on the radio and social media about what we are doing and what, what the implications are for residents, uh, the better off we're all gonna be and, and we owe that to the public, to be really clear about how we're using taxpayer dollars to, to provide services. And so, um, enhancing current communication efforts is, is Goal 3.1. Um, and this also, um, contemplates, uh, or actually, oh no, I'm sorry, that's Goal 3.2. Um, anyway, um, just looking at all the channels that we use to get information to the public and considering, uh, opening up some new channels. And Commissioner White was just talking about, um, talking to, talking with and taking questions from the public in meetings out in the community, uh, that is 3.1.4. Um, that's something that is, uh, that is included in this, um, and creating more person-to-person opportunities for the public to engage in conversations. Um, that's something that's really time-intensive, but that can be really valuable in terms of building relationships in the community and, and just listening to people. I think, you know, when I interviewed for this job, I really stressed that in my first six months on this job, um, I intended to spend a lot of time simply listening to people and I did that and I continue to do that because it's really important. Um, and I think we all, as county employees, need to be willing to, to do that. Um, Goal 3.2, consider increasing our public information coordinator position to full-time. Um, this is, again, this is consider doing it. We, we haven't taken any steps to do this. Um, this is currently a partnership with the hospital and so if this is something that we pursue, obviously it'll have to be in concert with the hospital. Um, and then also it would require additional, um, budget to, to fill that position. Um, I, like I said, I think Todd is doing a great job for us. Um, it's really incredible how much he can do in 20 hours a week. Um, I think the question for you all is, um, how much more could we do if we had a full-time, um, public information person? Um, a lot of counties do have that and, uh, make good use of it. Um, but I think if we, if we do pursue this, again, it's presenting conversations with, with the hospital, um, with Todd and amongst you all to determine if that's really the right step for us to take. But I, it's important for it to be in here because I think it's a, potentially a really good opportunity for the organization. Uh, Goal 3.2, did I see a hand go up?
Well, I do have a thought, but I, maybe I should wait. Just go ahead, Commissioner. So, talking about all these potentially being in the next budget and we're starting our budget cycle, when are we going to have a committee of the whole meeting for us to discuss, oh, look, there's four new positions or whatever? I don't know what you guys are gonna end up.
Yeah, that's, that's a great.
And how are we gonna make that decision?
That's a great question. I've actually, uh, started a spreadsheet of things that I know are coming down the pike that are potential new expenses. Um, and I say potential because, again, they're, they're requests, right? And they're not currently in, in the budget. And so the, you all are gonna have to consider and prioritize those requests and make decisions on them. Um, and I think the, the sooner we have that conversation, the better. Um, I think probably, let's see, the next business meeting's May 14th. I mean, so that the initial preliminary budget presentation will happen at the end of June, I think, or July, rather, July 23rd or something like that. I think it'd be good for us, like in early June, maybe at the first June business meeting to have a presentation on kind of some of the things that we're anticipating, so that you guys have a chance to chew on it and think about it, um, and not make any final decisions, but just start having a conversation about what, what are our priorities? What, what do we as a board wanna do?
Thank you. That, that's, that's what I need to know ahead. Well, if I say yes to this today, when do I get the opportunity to say, yeah, that's in 2025 budget? Or no, I don't think that's a good.
Yeah.
I just need a clarification.
It's too, too early. I mean, we, we're just now collecting information from departments, so we don't know what the preliminary picture looks like, but, uh, that'll start coming into focus by, by the beginning of June, I think. And, uh, so that wouldn't be too early to start having that conversation.
So, June.
Uh, I, I think that, yeah, like you said, the earlier the better and having that information would, would be really helpful for, for me too. And, uh, you know, looking at it all together to know what that, in total budget impact other requests would be, I think is really important and then we can kinda reel back from there as, as needed or as we determine, so, but getting it all out there so we can know what's, what, what might be, you know? Yeah, no, I just, I'm excited for that. More information's better on that front. I'm, I'm assuming we'll have, with the requests, we'll have pretty robust, uh, maybe robust is too, we'll have some presentations on the requests or, you know?
Just like we've done in the past.
Request-led, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure. Yep. Um, okay, so, um, related to the budget, Goal 3.3 is increasing and improving the quality of county budget information available. Um, in the current year budget, you all approved the expenditure, um, of the ClearGov software that we've talked about. This is something that our Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee has reviewed and recommended as a way of, um, more effectively, uh, informing the public about county budgeting and where tax dollars go. Um, and that's something that Brady has been working on with ClearGov, um, and we are expecting to be able to have that, um, up and running this fall. Um, still a lot of work to be done, but what we're doing right now is taking existing budget information from this year and past years, plugging it into their system. Um, and then as we take in new information for potential budget requests for next year, uh, getting that information into the software so that we can, uh, post online a dashboard that will give everybody a really clear picture, um, of what spending is currently going on and what's proposed. And Brady, I don't know if you wanna say anything more about kind of the current status of that, that work?
Um, it might be quicker than that. We're, uh, we're gonna meet, you'll be on the next one.
Okay.
First time.
Great.
Just on how to categorize, uh, some of our expenses and revenues. I want a little more clarity on that and I think you should be part of that, along with Kelly. Um, yeah, and so whether people, there's a potential that departments could be entering their information. I don't know if they'll have it ready for that.
Okay.
Before June, let's say. But you, it can go in either way. We have the option with our, we can either enter it into IFS if everything isn't ready to start there and then upload it into ClearGov or vice versa. You have the option, so, just depends on how quick it gets ready for that.
Commissioner?
So, does IFS talk to ClearGov then? Is, is that what I heard? You said directly?
Not directly, not directly, that uploads.
All right. I just thought maybe they were.
Or, or vice versa.
Okay.
So, literally they could, in some instances, if you have a certain module, you can upload, departments could, once they learn it, they can go in, upload their initial information into ClearGov and then once that's all in there, we can go, okay, we wanna download this into IFS. So they work with IFS.
Okay.
And other financial systems.
I forgot.
So, it can go either way, but they don't talk to each other, they just get, you know, imported one way or the other. And then it's static until you import or change it again.
Right. So that's 3.3. Um, Goal 4, 3.4 is, uh, investigating more user-friendly and reliable systems for streaming public meetings. Um, this is something that all of you are painfully aware of. We, um, we continue to have issues with getting meetings launched. Um, there have been instances where we've had to start late. Um, one thing to, to kind of reiterate is that our current system, our current video system is tied into our legislative management system, information management system. So iCompass, um, when we build an agenda in iCompass, it creates a stream key for, for the camera system. So those, those two things are married. And so it's not just as simple as, hey, let's just buy an owl and we'll set that up in the front of the room and everything will be fine. Um, it's, it's a lot more complicated than that. Um, and there are a whole bunch of different systems that we could use. Um, what we've tried to do in the short term is to kind of, well, idiot-proof maybe isn't the, the right term, but try to minimize the opportunities for people to fiddle with the system so that when we come into a, a Tuesday morning, things are disconnected and we're having trouble launching the meeting online. Um, and so this is something that, that we put in here because we know it's an issue. Um, can I tell you right now that I know there's a better system? No, I can't. There might be, uh, but any, any technology system is gonna have bugs and there, there are gonna be things that you have to work around or work. be things that you have to work around or work with. But, but I do think because we have had a number of challenges and they've been ongoing, that this is something that needs to be in here.
Commissioner Mills?
From the AMC conferences, I thought ClearGov also did something with agendas and...
There are a number of companies that do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Civic Plus is another one.
I'm sorry? Civic Plus, yeah. But, um, there was just some very impressive demonstrations that I saw and I was like, oh, man, that would really simplify our processes and make things a lot easier, both for the public and for staff. So, it exists beyond... I'm just afraid that we're gonna box ourselves in with what we have already versus really looking for, but...
One thing I will say about iCompass, and Jana can attest to this, is that they are super responsive. Customer service is excellent. So, when we do have a problem, they're right on it. And that's, you know, that is not true of all companies, especially tech companies. In fact, I mean, that's something that we've heard about the, you know, one of the softwares that we're investigating for payroll is from UKG. And there are other counties that have transitioned to UKG and have encountered some pretty significant problems in getting customer service. And so, the software may be great, but if you can't reach a person, then things go down. What good is it? And so, those are, those are, you know, before we throw out the baby with the bathwater, yes, iCompass has warts, but there's some things about it that are also really good. So, proceed with caution is always the best approach with, with technology. And then the last goal, 3.5, is expanding the availability and enhancing the quality of online services, so permitting and tax payments. This is something that we have been working on, it's something that we should continue to do. And I'm not the best person to talk about this, but we do have folks in Land Services and the Assessor's Office and in Brady's office that I think are going to be really good resources for us to explore the opportunities here. So, in however much time that took, that is our strategic plan.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, James, and thank you, Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner White for working on this. Since before you were hired, James, the board had recognized the real need for a strategic plan and it had been started and then there'd been a number of interruptions. And so, that was maybe part of the feedback you got from staff, like, if we're gonna start this, you gotta follow through. And so, I'm just so pleased that we've gotten to this point. Really appreciate all the distractions that you've had to deal with because I know even in your interview, you, you talked about the importance of strategic planning. So, yeah, this is really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and again, thank you to all the folks who provided input on this plan. It truly was a collective effort and...
And their tolerance to do it a second time, right? And not to sort of a...
Yeah, really grateful for all the folks who participated.
Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I want to go back to goal 1.1, implement capital improvement plan. And the third thing on there is plan and construct a justice center. And I was uncomfortable with that from the beginning. What if we just changed that to plan for space needs instead of committing in this document for three years that we are going to build a justice center?
So, I, I mentioned earlier in the meeting that I have some real misgivings about the potential expense of, of this plan. And I think there's a lot more work that we have to do. One, one thing to, one really important thing to remember is that the whole driver of that conversation was the safety and security deficiencies that we have in our current courtroom. Those are not going to go away. And so, I am not advocating that we move forward on the judicial center at this time. I don't think that's the right thing to do. But we need to have some kind of plan to address those security problems. And I don't know how that looks, but I don't, I think if we, if we say, we're not even gonna have a judicial center in the plan, to me, that says, we're just going to pretend like those security challenges don't exist. And I'm not comfortable with that either.
Well, I would respectfully disagree with you that we know we need to take care of the security issues for all our departments, whether it's the courts or whatever. I just worry that this connotation of we are going to build a justice center on top of an orchard, because that's the sentiment in the public right now. I'm just looking for more neutral phrasing of how we solve our space needs, issues, our security issues, and how we as a board are gonna move forward with that and not just commit to, this is the only way we're doing it. Because that, when I read this, that's what it says.
Right.
Commissioner Mills?
I, I, I think that's wise, if not just for the optics, right? I think it's wise because we don't know that is the way we're going, right? That's kind of been our momentum to, for funding, you know, but it's seeming like that we might have to change course. I think that is wise. I don't know how to phrase it better or differently.
Well, could you phrase court security and space needs?
That's probably, I don't know. That's, that seems, yeah.
When I looked at this, it's the first one and that was probably the first of the plan that you started and you went all the way through, but you didn't come back and look at that again. So, I only look at it as an, this is an umbrella. This is our goals and the semantics of the words, if you want to change, like Brady said, to security for court system, security for whatever, what of the terminology may reflect that we've paused? And the beginning goal is not here now. I don't know.
And so, Commissioner, I appreciate your comment and I agree with you. I mean, I think space needs are still something that, I mean, that's an immediate need. And if we, if we know that the price tag on this judicial center would be what it is, and we know we don't have that kind of change to, to put toward it, then we, we need to have a near-term plan for addressing those space needs. And I do like the idea, if, if the judicial center verbiage is what's causing heartburn, taking that out, but, but keeping something in there that, that recognizes the security issues that we need to deal with in this building, I think is really important.
So, I'd like to propose language for 1.1.3, plan for and construct with safety, security, and space needs in mind.
Construct.
I'm wondering, construct or reallocate space? I don't know. I'm not sure that solving some of our problems requires a brand-new building.
I'm not saying that.
So, when I, that's what I'm asking because when I hear construct, I think, ooh, we're building something new. And so, I get construct can also be remodeling. So, I'm just speaking out loud here of processing.
I agree with that. Yeah, I agree. I think there, so, one thing I was gonna talk about in my updates and we can just touch on it now since we're on the topic, is there are immediate needs that we have for, for office space and I've been looking at possibilities for that. I think, you know, that there aren't, there's not like a lot of unused office space in Cook County. So, so options are limited. I did go over to GES, I looked at the second trailer, you know, the first trailer's being used for the animal shelter, looked at the second one as a potential temporary office site. I think it's a possibility. I need to follow up with, with Howard Hedstrom to find out like how much they're, they'd be asking for it. There are also questions about how it'd be hooked up to utilities. That would be an additional cost. And then there's also, you know, there's other real estate in, in the county that potentially we should be looking at. So, that's something that I want to follow up on and I, I agree with you. I mean, I think we need to pause right now and figure out, okay, if we're not doing the judicial center, what are some other options for addressing short-term needs? And I, I do think too, though, in the, in the background, we need to be thinking about potentially a more permanent solution. Because the county's growing, there's no indication that's going to slow down anytime soon. And so, you know, a lot of, a lot of variables, but I think pausing right now is definitely the right thing to do, really do.
So, how about planning, plan to meet safety, security, and space needs? Just plan to meet those needs.
Say that again?
Plan to meet safety, security, and space needs.
Yeah.
It doesn't say construct, it doesn't say rehab, it just says, we're gonna plan so that we can address these needs.
Yeah, I would just recommend adding address.
Okay.
Plan for and address immediate and upcoming safety, security, and space needs.
Thank you.
Good addition. Yeah, and I, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just, you know, thinking about the LEC and this, this needs, it's going to require construction. I just didn't want to...
Optics, right?
Yeah, I didn't want to just say, that's the only thing, that'll solve all our problems. Okay.
I agree.
Just to clear that. I get there's going to be something.
I can tell you're ready to say.
There have been two parts of this, the new construction, there, there's a totally, I'm speaking for the entire population of Cook County now, because no one's complained. People are in agreement that law enforcement needs additional space, the Sallyport, and they've seen the numbers and this is what we need to do. No more jails, cells, but we, our law enforcement needs that. The justice center, the courts, the question, we have a courthouse, there are ways to, we spent the money on an, on the architectural firm to do the, the, for the justice center. I think they did a really thoughtful plan. I would like to consider getting them to, to take a look, a real look at this courthouse, the courthouse area there, there, up there. I have asked them, they do have a person on staff that is familiar with public buildings that are on the National Historic Register. So, to have them come in and look at it and, and the same process that was done for creating a new justice center, how could that, how could our existing spaces and what walls can be moved and what can't be moved, but to create a safer space and systems to make that work? When it comes to what is the real driver for needing more space, it's public health and human services. Why is that department continuing to grow and grow and grow? I tried for more than a year to really understand what happens and, and our need. And I appreciate the fact that we are a county that wants to take care of our community people. I, I get that. But I still don't understand why we have, is it seven department supervisors? Is that the word? Why is the, I would, is there some way to reorganize the departments? And if they're not all going to be under one roof, as Administrator James said, if we go out to get a building someplace else or there, besides the justice center, initial justice center concept of having a second floor on top of the law enforcement center, there were two other pretty pictures of doing an addition on this courthouse. We need to have those investigated too. We need to look at all of it besides what are the operating and maintenance costs for anything that is added onto this building? Or even if we go someplace else, this is going to be a cost. And that's the number. And that's what people need to, they need, that's our responsibility as the leadership to get, to be transparent. I happened to find this Cook County fiscal policy and then Brady gave me the updated one. And we talk about maintaining the public trust. And, and so, to do that, we have to explore everything.
And I think that's really valid.
And we've never done that, Commissioner Sullivan. We've never, it was like free money and we're going for the justice center. Unless I missed this, there was never a consideration of the other options that, that were promoted for addition on the courthouse. Did we have a discussion about that and I missed it?
So, go ahead, Commissioner Starly.
Yes, we had discussion and we voted because the bonding committee at the legislature was receiving requests. And Administrator Anne, Commissioner Anne Sullivan went to ELE to present what our request was. That was the first step. Everything else is like there, but that had to come first. And now we're waiting. But all these other ideas, because we don't know what the bonding group is going to do, the other possibilities are still out there. That was Plan A. That doesn't work. B, C, D, E. That's when we have a discussion, but that was the important thing to do. When the bonding committee and the legislature are working, that's when you go for what you think is needed here. Also, with the, with the waste treatment plan, that was important too. Because there's steps in order to get all this done with the legislatures.
Absolutely. So, I think that general language of, you know, we get rid of the word construct and we talk about plan and address, thank you for that. Our safety, security, and space needs will cover what we're all talking about. Any other suggestions for...
I, I just want to say I appreciate the recommended changes to, to 1.4. I think that makes a lot of sense and I feel really comfortable with that.
All right. So, with that change, is there a motion to approve the organizational strategic plan for 2024 through 2027?
Madam Chair, there was two changes and James, Administrator Yorki, you just said 1.4. I think we're also talking about 1.1.3.
1.1.3 was the one I...
1.4 was the one I kept arguing about, no.
Yeah.
And then 1.1.3, yeah. So, there was those two.
So, 1.4 also.
Hang on. My computer's gone to sleep. Okay. Let's see. Oh, yeah, sorry, I was totally off on that. Yes.
So, those two.
Those two.
1.1.3 and 1.4. And with those changes, I'd make a motion to approve in the 2024 to 2027 organizational strategic plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starly. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, Commissioner Sullivan. When it says the action, then, since we've changed the objective, the action says to finalize the design and plans, do we need to...
Before we do anything, we gotta finalize and design the plans, you know?
Okay. I just wanted to know if we needed to change that.
If it said finalize design and plans for justice center, then maybe we would need to change that now, but I think...
Yeah, no, it's generic enough if it fits. Good question. All right. Any other discussions?
Yes. So, if, if there's consensus that we are not pursuing the construction of a judicial center, we have an, an pending application with the state for a judicial center. And so, I, I think probably we need to notify our legislators that we're changing direction.
I have no intention of change direction until we get a no from the bonding. The whole point was to see if we can get $8 million and see what we can do with that. If we don't, the board has always said we need to go back, but to my knowledge, we haven't received a definitive no yet. Even if we do get $8 million, it might be the case where we can't afford it. You know, we have to, you know, recognize that potential reality too. So, but until, yeah, I, there are enough needs with the jail and the court system regarding... yeah, I, there are enough needs with the jail and the court system regarding safety, transport, and just human rights as far as, you know, anonymity and all that with the prisoner transfer or, maybe that's the wrong word, regardless, that I think it's still, it's still the way to go, I just don't know that we can afford it.
Right.
So, to be determined.
And we'll find out at the end of May.
I mean, the, the interesting thing here is that, you know, we presented that as a single package to, to the state, but in fact, it's two projects, right? There's the L E C addition on the north side and then the judicial center. And so, and I, I think your point is spot on, Commissioner. I think, yeah, we should wait to see what the outcome is. But I, I don't, I'll be curious to see if, if we get anything, can we, can we use it for a component of the total proposal or is the state gonna say, yeah, that's not really what you said you were doing? So, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, I guess.
Or if we speak to them beforehand about this might be the potential from the numbers that we have now seen, would it be to say, take these monies this time? I don't know. If we could not do it just for the L E C, then could those monies be put towards North Shore Waste?
No.
No, that would be no, okay.
And just to be clear, it's all for the community, right?
Yes.
That's, that's a, yeah.
And there is a separate bonding proposal for that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we will move on to employee concerns, commissioner concerns, and updates.
I'm sure we have administrator updates here.
Oh, I kind of already covered.
Oh, you covered it all. That's what we were doing, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Hawkins.
Let's see. Oh, highway department meeting and the space needs over there was discussed at our last highway advisory, H R A meeting, very exciting things happening, let's keep our fingers crossed, there will be groundbreaking soon, we certainly hope. And AMC legislative conference, I wanna tech, I know I brought that up at the public health meeting, but I wanna touch on that again because the cannabis planning and zoning manual is now online. So, I just wanna make sure that commit, that group gets together to review that information and that gets happening. And also there was from AMC information about public safety and jail infrastructure that I feel that I thought was interesting. I still don't think the referendum would pass in Cook County, but that you, they're considering using a sales tax to build that kind of infrastructure, so. And I guess that's about it.
All right, Commissioner White.
I don't have any concerns. I don't know where I've been, I'd have to check this out, but a lot of conversation, people asking about the justice center and the roads, they're excited about Engineer Hash, Pass showing up again. He seems to have been adopted by the East End.
All right. Commissioner Mills.
Really good E D A meeting, Teresa Bida is just rocking it, a lot of progress there with policies, really formalizing things. We're starting a strategic planning process, at least it's on the schedule. I will not be available in person, but I'm hoping to participate virtually if the format doesn't allow for it. Commissioner Johnson is the alternate for the E D A and so I would ask, I just don't know scheduling.
Teresa already talked to me about that.
Okay, okay, great. And, and maybe it's a both and too, I mean, there's no reason.
That's what I think.
Right, right, there's no reason we both can't. But just really good things, there'll be continued discussion down the road about the golf course and, and I'm asking the Parks and Trails Commission to discuss that at our meeting tonight too, a little bit. Um, let's see what else. Oh, yeah, had a wonderful employee breakfast led by Administrator Yorki with Breakfast Palooza 2024 and that was a good time.
Trademark, trademark.
Trademark, trademark. And that was a really good time, pretty good turnout and just good energy there and it coincided with Emergency Management Conference too, so that was fun just to have that overlapping back and forth. Let's see. That might be enough to update on right now. Oh, our local Y M C A now has a new interim director who is gonna be here for just six months, housing is an issue, of course, just met him this morning, very, very briefly before this meeting and we'll, we'll take some time to sit down and, and chat when I, next week here. And maybe that's enough now, that's enough for now.
All right, Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. Well, it was a busy weekend, starting off with the Lollapalooza breakfast, then moving into Emergency Management Conference and then over to the school for Earth Day, celebrating on Saturday, it was actually yesterday, but just to talk a little bit about the speaker that we had, Kevin Reed, who is from St. Paul and he's the Emergency Management Deputy Director and told about all the areas that he's involved in, plus a new building that they're having built right now in St. Paul, which gets them out of downtown St. Paul, which isn't very secure. So, that's a, that's a good point that he was very happy about. Afterwards, I did talk to him, I said, I still have my three-ring binder from 2015 up at Grand Portage when we had the FEMA conference and that, could we talk a little bit about having maybe a mini-course on how all of us would be involved in case there was an event that we all had to participate in? And everything from publicity and local information to get out to folks and he said, great, he said, Mike Keyport, he said, call me up and we'll see if we can do something. So, I'm hoping, you know, that we could do something maybe middle of the summer or later because when we're in the event, it's too late if we don't have the guidelines ahead of time. So, stay tuned, we might be able to work something out a little bit sooner. I'm always thinking about the fire, I'm thinking about, you know, semi-overturning on 61, the bridge going out, whatever, and that we would be called on to coordinate a lot of things with him, so, with Mike. So, we'll see if we can work something out.
Absolutely. Just to add to that Emergency Management Conference, one of the things I was particularly interested in was put on by the National Weather Service and spoke to the fact that in Cook County, we have a huge gap, an area that isn't really covered by Duluth radar. And it puts pilots, it puts our community, it puts everybody at risk. And one of the things that you can do is get a small radar unit, it's called an X radar, put in that's a lower elevation and it would cover that gap. And so, speaking with Mike Keyport and also Espanima, who was there presenting, there is a possibility we could get one of those units, it would be paid for by the National Weather Service and get it in Cook County. They recently installed one at an airport in the Twin Cities and because we're in the midst of master planning for the airport, that might be a possibility. So, we will be exploring that in the near future. Later this week, we have the final presentation of the Rainy River, Vermillion River, One Watershed One Plan in St. Paul. Commissioner Rich Svee from Lake County will be presenting for us, he was initially on that committee and so we are really fortunate to have him doing that presentation I provided at the regional group in Duluth back in early April. Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway has met and one of the areas that they were very concerned about is poor communication from the U S Forest Service about prescribed burns. There were some real problems last fall, particularly the mid-trail area where even our dispatch was not notified that the fires were being lit and lots of phone calls dispatching, we don't know, even people at the U S Forest Service were unaware of the fact that the fires had been lit. So, that was a huge part of the discussion and I'm sure you've seen on social media already, they have announced in advance the prescribed burns in the Tofti area, prescribed burns up the trail, but they're doing a really good job of communicating. And what we discovered is they've had so much turnover, they really didn't know who was supposed to do what. So, anyway, they appear to have addressed this concern and I'm really appreciative of that, as many members of our community are. Also at the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway meeting, they announced the Gunflint Cleanup, which is an annual event. Last year, it was held on the same weekend as graduation, which didn't work very well. So, they have moved that event to June 8th and there'll be posters put up around the community and some electronic communication as well. Personnel Committee met, it was actually a meeting today, but a month ago when we met, we talked a little bit about job descriptions and I brought up the fact that people had inquired, what's the job descriptioner for a county commissioner? And so, D D A did have a template, we had an opportunity to review that and I had already written kind of into our template some things I thought, so today at the Personnel Committee, they're gonna share a description and we'll see where that goes, but when people are looking to see what this job is about, we should have a description. So, anyway, it's nice to be moving forward with that. Budget Facilities and Advisory Committee meets again today, but also met in March. I did wanna mention, Commissioner White, they did talk about your question about having a Zoom link that would be available for guests and they were concerned about that. They said they have very candid conversations and they appreciate the fact that they can do that with just the group there, that they are advisory in nature, there was no statutory requirement to open meetings and they do publish their minutes and have Commissioner Hawkins and I available to respond to questions. So, I just wanted to let you know that was brought up. Brian Silas gave an update at that meeting on the work that the Maintenance Department is doing. We had a very recent update at our committee of the whole, but prior to that, he was talking, I think a month ago, about plowing and shoveling, cleanup in the basement here in the courthouse. He was in the process of setting up some furniture and moving that around, they were dealing with the pool boiler issue, they're gonna be doing fencing around the ball fields this summer and we're preparing for that. And of course, looking at the roof up here now that the snow is off of it, moving some gravel around and trying, trying to find out where that leak is. So, that were, those were the updates from him. Cook County Historical Society just went through strategic planning, so they're in the same position, position that we are and in the strategic plan, they discussed, which I brought up before, working on Chippewa City and historic preservation and also making some determination about archival storage and what direction they're going to go. And lastly, Airport Commission met on Thursday and yesterday, we got our first master plan document from R S and H. I haven't read it yet, it's about 50 pages, forwarded it to Brady, but anyway, we'll all have fun reading that. It's a, an inventory and facilities requirement document, so that's the first step. And then probably in early June, we'll be getting the group together that works on master planning and they'll be meeting with the F A A and with R S and H.
I think the last one was 93?
Yeah.
There's been updates, but the last.
The last master plan, right.
I remember that one, I think that was 13, no, revision?
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm very excited, it's gonna be a lot of work, but it's a plan for the next 20 to 30 years, so, and much of it involves federal funding, so lots of guidelines to follow. And again, we'll get that X radar discussion going as we're looking at the master plan to see if there's any way we can get better weather data. Commissioner Mills.
I did fail to report on the Building Committee, which I think is extremely relevant considering a lot of the discussion we've been having recently. And the thing I wanted to bring up was just around the, like Commissioner Starley was saying, the other plans, the other potential plans and whether or not we should be investing more in some of the explorer, exploration. At the time, the board didn't want to, we wanted to just spend money focusing this way, but now as the dollars are, you know, as things are developing and it's looking a lot steeper and we're just not sure, it might be prudent to start the process of looking at other, other options too. And so, I wanted to bring that to the board to think about if we wanted to, or if we wanna wait, wait from the state to see what that determination is made, there's not long before that, but just, we do know we have immediate space needs and so I don't want to, you know, lag any, any more than we've already been lagging these last however many years with deferred maintenance and addressing space needs.
Right.
Don't know what those costs would be, but I feel like the architectural services that we contracted for, for this last design were pretty well-spent and so if we can get similar for maybe one other idea or something like that, what kind of what Commissioner White was saying about this building and what our options could be, it might be money well-spent, but maybe we just wanna wait till we, we hear that final word from the state, I don't know. Just wanted to.
It won't be long, but I certainly agree that there's, you know, space needs, I mean, we look at land services, it's got people crammed in there, S W C D, that office is designed for two and there's sometimes five in there, you know, that's really crowded and P H H S, of course, so we have lots of, lots of areas we need to look at.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna have, well, so, right now, we kinda have all our eggs in that one basket and it's, it's sounding like that basket might not be the one we wanna use. And so, it might be worthwhile to start looking at other baskets, but maybe it's too soon, I don't know.
I don't think it is.
Okay. Well, and so what does that mean? What does that involve and what are the next steps there? Is kinda where that is. And maybe that's not a fair discussion for three minutes to noon here, but, but I wanna make sure it was brought before the board at least to think about.
Commissioner Sullivan, could we put that on the next committee of the whole to talk about and should there be monies coming from the state? Hallelujah, if they would let us use it on the justice center, they'll doubt that, you know, that would be, go a long ways towards that part of it.
We'll get that on a future agenda. Commissioner?
And I'm guessing that would be part of our budget and facility advisory committee meeting agenda today, that discussion of what, what does that group feel, which way the county board should go and what we should be experiencing, you know?
We'll, we'll talk about that for sure.
So, I think go there for the advisory committee, get their input, come back and have a discussion about.
Yep. All right, anything else for the good of the order? We have our lodging tax comparison for February and sales tax comparison through February of 2024. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Okay, I'll be here.